Okay, good evening. I'm going to wait a little while here as I watch the list of attendees increase. Before I get started so that I'll know that people who who have zoomed in are here. Even though we're not going to get to the to the hearing until seven twenty, I believe, on the calendar for it seems to have leveled off for the time being. So I will get started. Good evening. And welcome. My name is Paul Alpert and I am the Chair of the Planning Board. This is an open meeting of the Needham Planning Board. It is Tuesday, July twentieth, two thousand and twenty one. And it's being conducted remotely, consistent with the current state regulations and is being recorded. Public access to this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation unless the law this meeting will not have public comment except in connection with any hearing that is on the agenda. We have one hearing on the agenda for sixteen eighty eight Central Avenue. That is scheduled to start at seven twenty. First, we will confirm that a quorum of the members of the planning board are present. When I call your name, please respond that you are present. Marty Jacobs.
Present.
Jean McKnight.
Present.
Adam Block.
Present.
And Natasha Espada.
Present.
And the Chair, Paul Alpert, is present. We have one hundred percent participation tonight. As each agenda item is reached, I will introduce participants who are here to present or discuss projects and proposals. For those participating in the meeting, please also be aware that others may be able to see you and hear you. Anything that you share or state will be a matter of public record. All supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website, www needhamma.gov, unless otherwise noted. I'm now going to read our meeting ground rules. I am going to expound on that for the hearing and I will do that after we open the hearing. So the general meeting ground rules are designed to allow for an accurate public record. Each of the speakers on our agenda will be introduced. After speakers conclude their remarks, each board member will be asked by name for any comment, questions, or motions. All votes will be taken by roll call. For each participant, please remember to state your name for the record before speaking. And for attendees at the public hearing, please also give your address. Read. And those are our ground rules. So we will go to, it is seven oh nine. We have ten minutes before the hearing. So we will go to the first item on our agenda to discuss the draft amendment to the major project site plan review number two thousand five dash oh seven Needham Gateway LLC. With regard to the property located at one hundred and one twenty Highland Avenue, Needham, Massachusetts. This was a request to amend the decision to allow in the existing development, all of the uses allowed by right or by special permit in the zoning district. And we had our hearing on this at our last meeting and I don't remember if we took our vote then. I believe we did, but we certainly reached our decision and we're ready now to review the written decision. So, board members, well, who's here for that? I see, I see Rick Mann is here.
Hi, Rick.
Hi. On my list of participants, is your client here, Rick?
No, he is not.
Okay, so it's just Rick, Rick Mann, the attorney for the, for the applicant. Is here.
And Lee, did you, or Alex, did we vote the release?
No, I think we need to vote the relief at this meeting and then adopt the decision.
Right. So the wording for the vote is in the decision when somebody wants to make that motion. Board members, have you all had a chance to, to review the decision and do you have any, any comments or changes? I reviewed it and I had, I had no changes.
I have no changes.
I have no changes.
I have no changes.
All right. Very good. So may I have?
I do want to just ask Rick Mann whether he's had a chance to review and whether he has any problems or issues.
Yes, Marty, thank you. I guess I have reviewed it. He sent it to me a couple of days ago and it's fine, absolutely fine.
Thank you.
So the vote is on the bottom of page two if somebody would like to make the motion.
Okay, I move to grant an amendment to a major project, excuse me, to a major site plan review special permit issued by the Needham Planning Board on January twenty fourth, two thousand and six. Amended August fifteenth, two thousand and six, December, and then there's a variety of amendment dates under section seven point four of the Needham zoning bylaw and special permit two thousand and five oh seven. Section four point two, subject to the planned modifications, conditions, and limitations set forth in the decision, a decision that we have before us. And this motion pertains to the property at one hundred and one, one twenty Highland Avenue and the applicant is Needham Gateway LLC.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I will call for the vote. Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
Ms. McKnight.
Hi.
Mr. Block.
Hi.
Mrs. Spada.
Hi.
And the Chair votes aye. The motion carries. The decision says four to one. Was there somebody who wasn't present at the hearing? Natasha, were you there?
I'm sorry?
Were you at the hearing for this?
Yes.
It was indeed.
Jean voted against it.
Oh, Jean voted. That's right.
Correct. That is correct.
Oh.
But she, but she seconded it, or she, she.
I did make the motion.
Well, have a change.
It was persuaded by.
It was approved five to nothing, Lee.
I will have to change your five to nothing because I did, I did vote for it, obviously.
Much appreciated.
Okay, we'll make that revision in the, in the decision.
Okay, and with that one change to the decision, may I have a motion to approve the decision as drafted?
I move to approve the decision as drafted with a change noting that, that the vote was unanimous.
We have a vote, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I will call the roll. Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
Ms. McKnight.
Hi.
Mr. Block.
Hi.
Mrs. Spada.
Hi.
And the Chair votes aye. It's approved four to, five to nothing.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Rick. Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Okay, we have we've got five more minutes. So Jean, have you discussed any of the, and any, any of the minutes that we have in our package?
Yes. I present the minutes of May first, two thousand and twenty one with one question. Right, the May first. At, at, under discussion of annual and special town meeting warrant articles in the third paragraph that begins, Mr. Alpert. And in the discussion of this is regards article twelve, which is funding for planning studies. And but in the second last line, there's a quotation from Ms. Newman. She noted, there is one more article. Article twelve is for fifty thousand dollars for continuation of the small repair grant program. It must have been a different number for that article because article twelve is the article we're talking about with the planning studies. So the small repair. I, I don't know, was it article thirteen? I just don't know. But if, if we could leave it, I thought you'll correct it with the correct article number for that. Then that takes care of the May first. So I move that we accept the meeting, the minutes of the May first, two thousand and twenty one planning board meeting with the one correction discussed.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, we'll call the roll. Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
Ms. McKnight.
Hi.
Mr. Block.
Hi.
Mrs. Spada.
Hi.
And the Chair votes aye. It passes unanimously.
Okay, in the next set of minutes, I have no questions or comments regarding those minutes. It's May third, two thousand and twenty one. So I move that we accept the red line version that's before us, the May third, two thousand and twenty one planning board minutes.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. I will call the roll and let's jumble it up a bit and I'll switch to alphabetical this time. Mr. Block.
Hi.
Mrs. Spada.
Hi.
Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
Ms. McKnight.
Hi.
And the Chair, whose name begins with A, this last and votes aye. So it's unanimously approved.
So those, those, those two sets of minutes we just approved were short meetings that we had in just prior to the special town meeting and the annual town meeting. The next one is a more lengthy set of minutes for one of our regular meetings, May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty one. And I do have one question on page four. And this is part of the discussion that begins on page three. And this is the property at one hundred one ten West Street, the new eighty-three unit assisted living, et cetera. On page four, the fourth paragraph. I, I don't quite know what the reference is and I am quoted. Previous, the previous paragraph has Ms. Mrs. Spada asking about the vinyl fence dumpster enclosure, which was something we want, we had, you know, we wanted to make sure was, was done a certain way. And then it, it ends with all members are okay with vinyl fence. Then it says, Ms. McKnight stated, the usual practice is not to have a public hearing. Mr. Block agreed. And then it goes on to talk about the lighting. So the, the sentence, Ms. McKnight noted, doesn't seem to fit in there and it really just doesn't make any sense in the context. So I propose that it be deleted and let anybody recalls what the context was and how it should be refrained. Everybody good with that?
I don't recall that either. Lee, do you have any memory on?
I have no memory of what the conversation was at that point.
Yeah. So I think it makes sense without that sentence and I just want to make sure that didn't raise any issues with anybody. So I move that we accept the red line version that is before us of the May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty one planning board minutes with the one deletion that was discussed tonight.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I I wonder were there certain circumstances, Jean, that we make minor modifications and do not require a special or a public hearing, rather?
Yes, there are minor, we, we sometimes make it, we have something before us, some special permit has been granted. The applicant comes back a few months later and says, you know, there's something I'm having a hard time complying with. Can we make this one change? And we consider whether that change would require a public hearing or not. And if we consider it a de minimis change, usually we vote on that, say, it's a de minimis change. We don't need a public hearing. We can just decide. Sometimes the, it's such an important change that we do have a public hearing. So I think that's what was being discussed, but it, to me, it, it kind of doesn't make sense in the context of the, of the paragraph before it or after it, so.
Or a couple of paragraphs beforehand, when we were talking about screening for a generator. I think the context of it was in the pre, immediately preceding paragraph.
The one about generators.
Yes.
That preceded the vinyl fence.
And I recall a discussion about whether or not, I think the public hearing question was that it would effectively be treated as a minor modification, not, and in that case, not requiring a, a public hearing.
In the future, a change to the screening of the generator might be a change that could be made without a public hearing. We, we sometimes do decide that. Perhaps it's true, perhaps, but is it simpler? Just to delete the sentence per the motion or you think we?
I guess it's up to the Chair to decide. I mean, it's not, it's not really that consequential, I guess, but I just, I recall that that was what the question about a public hearing related to.
To be honest, I don't recall the conversation. So and Lee said she didn't recall the conversation and Jean is suggesting that we just delete the sentence that it doesn't really affect the minutes, so.
It doesn't.
We have a
We have a vote.
We have a vote. Mr. Block. Oh, yes, Jean.
Was there a second?
Yeah, smarty second.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Mr. Block.
Hi.
Mrs. Spada.
Hi.
Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
Ms. McKnight.
Hi.
And the Chair votes aye. It's unanimous.
That takes care of those little three minutes, three sets of minutes.
Yep, and it is now seven twenty three. Before I open the public hearing, I forgot to introduce our staff who is here this evening by Zoom and has been here since the beginning. Our Director of Planning and Community Development, Lee Newman.
Present.
And our Assistant Town Planner, Alex Clay. Alex, you here? Yeah, she's kind of muffled, but I heard a response. It sounds like Alex is also our IT person tonight because Clay, Clay Hutchinson is not here this evening. Okay, let's open the public hearing for sixteen eighty eight Central Avenue. A major project site plan. Or because this is actually a proceeding under chapter forty eight, section three. And our bylaws do not have a separate provision for us to consider that. And so we are proceeding under the procedures that we have for a major project site plan review. Needham Enterprises LLC is the petitioner for the property at sixteen eighty eight Central Avenue regarding a proposal to construct a new childcare facility of nine thousand nine hundred sixty-six square feet and thirty parking spaces that would house an existing Needham childcare business, Needham Children's Center. This is a continuation of having opened the hearing before. So I am going to assume that we have already had a motion to dispense with the reading of the notice and that that was passed.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. As a neighbor, I need to recuse myself. So I will go out into the public hearing and then I will come back at the end of the, of the hearing.
Thank you. You. And since the rest of the board is here, we do have a quorum for this hearing. This has been a very contentious matter. We have a lot of communication. I expect there's going to be a lot said at this hearing. And so I would like to if people would please, if people would please, if people would please mute themselves. If people would please. Thank you. And so I would like to make a few remarks as to where, where we are how I intend to conduct this hearing. And I have not discussed this with the other planning board members. So when I'm through, I will open it up to discussion by the remaining planning board members if they have any comments or objections to what I am about to say. First of all, I want to begin by stating that, as I have already stated, this is a site plan review. But it is a special site plan review because we are governed by Massachusetts General Law's chapter forty eight, section three, which is also referred to as the Dover Amendment. And the case law that has been generated under that statute. Pursuant to that statute, we cannot deny the project. This is a daycare center that is allowed by right under that statute. It's allowed by right under our bylaws, but that's probably because it's by rights statutorily. And so, so we are proceeding not necessarily by our bylaws. And I say not necessarily, but maybe necessarily. But pursuant to that statute and the case law. And so I'm going to quickly read on the statute first that at this hearing and by reason of this hearing, this board may make the project, and I'm reading from the statute now, subject to reasonable regulations concerning the bulk and height of structures and determining yard sizes, lot area, setbacks, open space, parking, and building coverage requirements. Now, that proviso, it starts provided, however, so the cases do refer to it as the proviso that's in the statute. That proviso has been expounded upon specifically in the Supreme Judicial Court case of the trustees of Tufts College versus the City of Medford, which is a nineteen ninety-three Supreme Judicial Court case. Where the court said, and I'm reading from the court decision, local zoning requirements adopted under the proviso, which is what I just read, to the Dover Amendment, which serve legitimate municipal purposes sought to be achieved by local zoning such as promoting public health or safety, preserving the character of an adjacent neighborhood, or one of the other purposes sought to be achieved by local zoning as enumerated in particular statute. Maybe, may be permissible enforced consistent with the Dover Amendment against a Dover Amendment use. It goes on to say what we have said thus, so that list is more expansive than what was listed in the statute. The court went on to say, what we have said thus far suggests that the question of the reasonableness of a local zoning requirement as a as applied to a proposed educational use will depend on the particular facts of each case. That is a most important provision when considering a chapter forty eight, section three matter. We are not considering the literal wording of our bylaw. We can look to our bylaw for items that we can possibly regulate. But whether a regulation under the bylaw is permissible is decide, is whether it's a reasonable regulation for this use at this site as presented by the application is a reasonable regulation is a facts and circumstances decision that this board has to make. So some items in the bylaw, we may be able to enforce, some items we may be able to expand upon. And some items we may have to not use because we cannot deny the use of a childcare center. Now denying the use is both. In fact, we can't say we're denying the use. And it's also de facto, we can't issue regulations, they would not be reasonable regulations if the practical effect would be that the project could not be built and used. So we have to be mindful of that. The court went on to say a local zoning law that improperly restricts an educational use. Now, that was an educational use, this is a daycare use, but the statute is is, is the same. By invalid means, such as by special permit process may be challenged as invalid in all circumstances. In this case, for example, the land court properly declared invalid the site plan and special permit requirements of the ordinance in that case. So we're not calling this a site plan special permit because the court seems to be saying that that's an invalid procedure, but we can proceed with withholding the hearing under those requirements. I just want to give an example of what we're talking about, which is from the case of Rogers versus the town of Norfolk, which is also a Supreme Judicial Court case which involved a daycare center where the zoning bylaw provided for a maximum of twenty-five hundred square feet. And so the zoning authority of the town of Norfolk ruled that that particular project, which exceeded twenty-five hundred square feet, could not be approved because of the bylaw. The petitioner in Rogers first challenged the bylaw as being an unreasonable regulation and the court said, no, the bylaw as it reads is a reasonable regulation, but then the court went on to say facts and circumstances in that particular case, enforcing that bylaw was an unreasonable regulation for that use. This board will be mindful of these rules, particularly that kind of example where we can use our bylaws as a guide. But we must look at the facts and circumstances of this particular project as to the regulations that we want to impose on this project. So that is, it is not denying the project, but regulating it in a reasonable way. That concludes. By the way, there are the cases where that same sort of result happened where, where a bylaw was, was held to be a reasonable bylaw, but not to be enforced in that particular case. I now want to move on to the issue of whether there were ethical violations that would cause us to act in a certain way by this board. I want to now state category. I want to now state categorically that I will not entertain a discussion with regard to the ethical issues that have been raised. This board does not have the statutory authority to decide ethical issues. Planning boards are a creature of statute and our our powers stem from the statute and we deal with zoning issues. We presented this to our town council, Mr. Heap, who provided us with the following email. The planning board does not have the jurisdiction to hear or decide matters under Massachusetts General Law is Chapter two sixty-eight A, the state ethics law. Even it is assumed that the letter correctly identifies a conflict of interest. I don't believe that's Mr. Heap, our town council doesn't believe that this would affect the planning board's review of the project under the zoning bylaw. In particular, he has, he has not found any case to suggest that a conflict of interest within the ranks of an applicant's consultant team provides an independent basis for a board to disapprove a zoning permit application. I agree with Mr. Heap that this board does not have jurisdiction to deal with that matter. There are other agencies and boards that do. And so I will not entertain any discussion on the ethical issue. By the way, this board, which consists of this quorum consists of three lawyers, I don't think any of the three of us have any expertise in ethical matters to be able to decide and be judge and jury on that kind of an issue. I would now like to move on to the procedure that I intend to follow tonight. In following with our usual procedures, the representatives from the applicant will present the project to us and explain the project. Before we get to, before we get to that, I will introduce the participants who are here tonight and call and call their role. I will then call on Mr. John Diaz from GPI, which is the peer review company for the traffic study for his comments. Then I will call on the planning board members for any questions and comments that they may have. I would like to suggest that the planning board members limit it. What I personally intend to do is to limit it only to questions that I have at that time that I feel are particularly relevant at that time because I want to wait until after the attendees all have a chance to speak before I make my comments and possibly raise other questions. Although as during the course of the proceeding, if something comes up, I may ask a question. But I will give the other members of the planning board an opportunity to raise questions and make comments at that time, but I would suggest that we let the attendees have a chance to, to weigh in before we expound more on that. Then I will call on attendees. Now, I will look at what time it is and how many attendees have raised their hands. If an attendee wishes to speak, there's a hand raised function on the Zoom. Please raise your hand by, by using that function. I am hoping that my Zoom allows the raised hands to be in order of timing so that we go by those who raised hands first. I don't know if that's the case. But I will go to the attendees. I will look at the time and look at how many attendees have raised their hands to determine whether I will put a time limit on how long a particular attendee may speak. If there are very few attendees who wish to speak and it's still fairly early in the evening, I will give flexibility and leeway for people to speak. But we have, we have fifty-five attendees here now. We may get more. So if we have fifty hands raised, I'm going to limit the amount of time that an attendee will speak, and I'm leaving it up to myself to, to decide when we reach that point, depending upon how many attendees have their hands raised and what time it is. Having said that, I do not expect that we're going to finish tonight. I'm going to put a hard stop on this hearing at ten thirty-five and entertain a motion at that time to continue the hearing to the next planning board meeting in August. Our planning board meetings have been running very, very late. And we're not, we do have some things to discuss after this hearing before we can adjourn our meeting. And so I don't want to go beyond, say, ten minutes of eleven for the entire meeting. And so I will put a hard stop at ten thirty-five. If we go for a long time in August, I will, I intend to do the same thing there and continue until our first September meeting. I want all the attendees who wish to speak to have an opportunity to speak. That is their right. And so with those limitations, we will have a, a full discussion. I want to close by thanking the neighbors for their thoughtful comments and emails and letters that we have received. I have found the debate that has occurred in this matter to be very civilly conducted. And I greatly appreciate that. We also appreciate the fact that each neighbor who has chosen to weigh in on this has done so individually. We did not get the same email over and over and over again, just signed by a different neighbor. Each neighbor had an individual thing to say. And that's how democracy should work. And, and I greatly appreciate that. I also, as an attorney, would like to thank the few, two or three, maybe there were four neighbors who are attorneys who commented and did more than comment. Some of them submitted lengthy briefs and memos. And they did so very professionally and presented their arguments very professionally, and I would like to thank them for their conduct to this point. With that, let me find now my list of attendees. I have it. So we have here tonight. Please acknowledge that you're here verbally as I call your name. Mark Glusing, the architect for this project. Pat Day, the operator of Needham Children's Center. Evans Huber, the attorney for the applicant.
Here.
John Glossa of Glossa Engineering.
I am here.
John Gillan of Gillan Associates. And John Diaz of GPI. Thank you. That, Mr. Huber.
Mr. Chair.
That took so long. Oh, I'm sorry. I did say that the planning board members would have an opportunity to respond to my comments. Mr. Block. You're muted.
I just wanted to say that as you were the ground rules for the hearing, I noticed that we had two from attendees. Now there are a total of four, and I don't know if they wish to speak in reference to the ground rules that you set out specific to the hearing as opposed to comments on the merits of the application itself. But I just want to be aware of that.
I'm going to, I'm going to say that my ground rules for the hearing is not up for discussion among the attendees. That's not something that I believe the attendees have the right to, to weigh in. They have the right to weigh in on the merits of the project. How we run our meeting to us. Mr. Jacobs.
Mr. Chair. Understanding your ground rules clearly and totally agreeing with you that we're not in the business of deciding ethical issues on the planning board. I do have a question. There is from Maggie Abruzzese, a letter to us, Lee Newman and Ms. Clea requesting that planning board pause its consideration until such time as Town Council Heap should issue a written opinion on the ethical issues here. Do you know, first of all, whether Town Council Heap is intending to issue such an opinion letter?
We did get an email today from Mr. Heap. I'm getting some feedback. I don't know what that's from. Stating that contrary to Ms. Abruzzese's assertion that the statute requires a written opinion, written opinions are not required, and he does not intend to issue a written opinion on the matter.
I see. Okay. Okay. So I guess my only question is if he's not going to issue an opinion and the ethical nature of the alleged violations is not going to be decided by us. Does it make sense to propose that we do pause this hearing for a short period of time, relatively short period of time, say, till our next meeting? So that the ethical issues can be decided by the body who is in the business of doing that, which is presumably the State Ethics Commission? And allow whoever wants to make a complaint, to make the complaint and get an, get an answer. And we will have paused just for that short time and for that sole purpose. I just want to put that on the table for discussion.
Before I respond, would any other member have a vote to respond? Jean or Adam?
Yes, if I may. Allegations of ethical impropriety have been made a good month or two ago, back in March, I think. If the person's making those allegations had to file a complaint with the Ethics Commission, that could have done so. Though I see no reason to put our hearing off in order to allow that to be done because there's been plenty of time for them to do that if they had chosen to do so.
Adam, would you like to run?
A few, a few thoughts first, just technologically, and I, I don't know, Alex, if there's anything you can but there is a terrible feedback echo that's extraordinarily distracting. I'm sure it is for all the attendees. And it's, it is for me. I'm not sure if there's a way if we should log out or log back in, if there is some kind of a bad connection. It doesn't matter who's speaking, but whoever does, there is some kind of feedback. And I'm not sure if it's about people muting or not, but that's one comment. With respect to the, to the questions raised by the claims of ethical impropriety, if it was found by legal process of competent jurisdiction that ethical violations had occurred, I'm not entirely sure what impact, if any, that would actually have on the application before us.
I would, okay.
I don't know that it would invalidate. Marty, do you think it would invalidate the, the presence of the application itself?
Well, I don't know, but that's one of the questions that could be asked of the ethics board.
Okay. I agree with Jean. This was raised a long time ago. The person who raised it is an attorney. Could have brought something to the, to the ethics board or the Ethics Commission. There were possible, possibly other remedies to, to have either the Ethics Board or some other authority of competent jurisdiction to issue an order telling us to desist. That was not done. If in fact the Ethics Board finds that there are ethical violations and that because of the ethical violations, the proceeding is not proper, that's a decision for the Ethics Board to make and, and, or whoever hears that matter of competent jurisdiction to make. And if that's a decision that we wind up with, I'm, I'm willing to live with that. This is a matter that has been on our agenda for a long time. The ethical issues were raised quite a while ago. And I think we should move forward. We're certainly going to have, I'm sure, I mean, it's already ten minutes of eight. I'm sure we're going to have a continuance until the August meeting, which is almost a month away. And if someone wants to try to stop this proceedings, they will have an opportunity, they will, they, they will have a few weeks to, to proceed on that. I don't think it's, I don't think this board has any jurisdiction to have any issues regarding the ethical issues should be raised to a different, a different entity. Yes, Adam.
I'd be curious about a couple of things. First, to Mr. Huber, if, if you have investigated with the Ethics Commission at all the question about an ethical impropriety, and if so, what the outcome was of your investigation?
I have not. Let me. As far as I'm concerned, that is a matter for the people against whom these allegations have been made to consult with Town Council. Town Council is the appropriate person to be advising them on that. I believe they have done that. And I am not involved in or weighed in on that subject.
I have asked Town Council to inquire of the Ethics Board and the Ethics or the Ethics Commission, I believe it is. And the Ethics Commission told Town Council or Town Council told me that the Ethics Board told him, this is all. I mean, his response was, was in writing by an email, and it's probably, it should be part of the record, but as was my request, but he called and was told that the Ethics Commission would not weigh in on a question posed by anyone other than someone who, for whom an ethical issue is being raised by, about that person. So the Ethics Commission refused to give Mr. Heap any kind of an answer.
All right. Thank you for the discussion and consideration. I won't press the I do have one other question that in, to start this presentation tonight from the applicant's side, I, I had the same problem that Jean, I think, had in reviewing the plans without a hard copy. Could someone just spend five or 10 minutes at the beginning sharing the screen and showing us the current version of the plans that we are to consider?
Mr. Jacobs, that's our intention.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. I was just going to suggest that we get on the record a motion to continue this hearing to August seventeenth at seven twenty in the case of a technical difficulty this evening.
So Mr. Block moved, then Mr. Jacob seconded. Any discussion? I'll call the roll. Mr. Block.
Hi.
Mr. Jacobs. Ms. McKnight. You're, Jean, you're muted.
I.
And the chair votes aye. It's unanimous four to nothing. Thank you, Lee. All right, Evans, it's five minutes of eight. Congratulations. I only took a half hour. You have the floor.
Thank you. Before I begin the substantive part of the presentation, I did want to raise one procedural issue. Mr. Albert, you had outlined the sort of the order in which people would speak, and I was going to suggest a modification to that. There's various team members here, and you have Mr. Diaz here. Jack Gillan is here. He's our traffic engineer, and I thought perhaps it would make sense for Mr. Diaz, rather than having Mr. Gillan speak during our presentation in chief, to wait for Mr. Diaz's comments and then have Mr. Gillan speak because he's here primarily to speak to Mr. Diaz's comments. As the Board is aware, there had been an effort to set up a meeting at which the two professionals would be, you know, Mr. Diaz would be raising his questions and concerns, and Mr. Gillan would be responding to those as a way of trying to move the analysis forward. That meeting didn't take place, and so, you know, Mr. Gillan, it's going to basically take place during this meeting, and so I thought it might make sense for Mr. Diaz to speak and then Mr. Gillan to speak in response.
Well, I agree with you to some extent. In the normal course of an applicant's presentation and the the members of the team. Wouldn't Mr. Gillan be making a presentation outlining to the Board verbally what his findings were first? And then I would be willing to then move on to Mr. Diaz at that point, but wouldn't that make sense as a preliminary matter on the traffic issues?
Well. Except that, as everybody is aware, the traffic is a highly contested issue. Mr. Diaz has made a peer report in which he has peer review report in which he has identified various issues and concerns, and those are things that, you know, that's one of the primary reasons Mr. Gillan is here is to speak to those.
Okay, we'll discuss the order of speaking between the two of them, and I actually was anticipating a discussion between the two of them when we got to that issue. But I'm sure that there were matters that you and and probably Mr. Glusin and probably Mr. Glossa will be presenting.
Absolutely. Yes, that's definitely the case. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So to respond to Mr. Jacobs' request, and this is the way we had been intending to proceed, what I'd like to do is ask Mark Glusin, he's going to be controlling the screen sharing for us. Do we need to ask someone at the Planning Board to allow the screen sharing?
I see.
To enable it?
Dickinson has logged in. He is our IT person here. So either Alex or Clay, can you allow Mark Glusin to share his screen? Mark, you have the screen.
Okay, thank you. So this, to answer Marty's and other board members' question, is the most recent version of the plan. As the Board is probably aware, the plan has undergone several revisions. When we originally proposed this plan, the large building on the left side of your screen was set back 40 feet from Central Avenue. In response to concerns, we came up with a revision that set it back 50 feet. And that impacted the turnaround and parking area between it and the barn. And then in response to further feedback about the setback in comparison to neighboring properties, we redesigned it again to its current configuration, which is a setback of 64 feet at the closest point. The orientation of the building is not exactly parallel to Central Avenue. So there is one point in the current proposal where the mouse is right now that is 64 feet from Central Avenue. Other portions of the building are actually further away from Central. So basically, the proposal is what we are showing here. The primary building on the left side of the screen is the childcare facility that we're proposing to build. It includes a large space that is a play area. It's not a room, you know, sort of a room for the children to spend their day in, but it's intended as an indoor play area. Pat Day is here, and she is going to be speaking about sort of some of her vision for the design of this building and, you know, how Needham Children's Center, which has been a part of the Needham community for 40 years, you know, how they've advanced the cause of childcare. The building is at the top of the, on the north side of the site, there is a driveway which is now approximately 205 feet long. That figure does not include the portion, what we'll call the drop-off area, where the where the paved area turns and heads south. That area where the mouse is right now is not included in that 205-foot figure. That's additional space. So if you look at the site, the driveway is designed to be wide enough to have cars flowing in both directions. Cars will turn in. They'll be driving along the south side of that driveway, come up to the drop-off area, which is at the rear of the building. There are a number of, a small number of parking spaces in between the proposed building and the existing barn. And then there is a turnaround area so that cars can continue to flow and turn around and head back out. The the entire parking lot has 30 spaces as designed, which we believe is greater than the number required, both by the formula that the town has been using for such sites. It's a formula that you may have some familiarity with, which is basically one space per staff member. Plus, for facilities that have children, more than 45 children, it's it's eight spaces plus one space for each 40 children. So in this case, that would be 11 spaces. So the 30 spaces exceeds the requirement. The 30 spaces also exceeds the requirement, as noted, for parking, as noted by Mr. Delgazo, the town engineer, in his comment letter. He was referring to another standard, which I probably can't quote correctly, but the standard that he was referring to is based on the size of the building and the parking requirement that he came up with was 25. So our view is that the proposed park, parking of 30 spaces exceeds the requirements regardless of which standard you are using. It's been, the site also includes, to the south of the main building and to the south of the barn, there's a a grassy area that's going to be enclosed by a fence and used as a play area for children. And there is a substantial amount of landscaping that's going to be added, which Mr. Glusin can talk about in greater detail. That landscaping plan that's currently shown on what we're looking at has undergone its own revisions and improvements and in response to comments from the Design Review Board. The site does include an existing barn, which we do not propose to tear down. And we're going to be, I'll be discussing that in a few minutes in connection with another one of the hotly contested issues in this case, which is the setback of the building. But for the moment, I'll just say that our proposal is to leave the existing barn standing and and the design is that we're proposing or seeking approval for is what you're looking at now. So I have with me the various other professionals. There are, Mr. Glusin is our architect, and he'll be talking about the design of the building, the facade of the building, especially as it faces Central Avenue. The landscaping plan and some of the changes that we have that the project has undergone in response to comments from the Design Review Board and from some neighbor comments. Pat Day and other members of the Needham Children's Center are here. Ms. Day is going to be speaking about the general operations of Needham Children's Center, and either Ms. Day or another person on behalf of Needham Children's Center is also going to be speaking about another issue of great concern and interest, which is the arrival and departure times for vehicles and the number of students and the you know, how many vehicles there are in comparison to the number of children. And the practices that Needham Children's Center has used recently during COVID to manage pickups and drop-offs in such a way that people are not arriving all at the same time, which is a great concern. As mentioned, John Glossa is here. He's our site engineer. He'll be available to answer any technical questions that the Board may have. And Jack Gillan is our traffic engineer, and he is he's here to speak to, primarily, as I mentioned before, he's here to speak to the the traffic, the concerns raised by John Diaz. I would summarize Mr. Jack Gillan's original traffic analysis as basically saying that he, it is his conclusion that this site as designed does not present problems vis-à-vis traffic cars stacking and backing up onto Central Avenue, nor does it present, does the site as a whole present a unacceptable level of reduction in service on Central Avenue. I know that there's a lot of people who are concerned in general about the traffic on Central Avenue. But I would note, I would particularly direct the Board's attention, and I know Mr. Delgazo, I'm sorry, Mr. Diaz, has questions and concerns that he would like addressed, which Mr. Gillan is here to speak to. But I would like to direct the Board's attention to the fact that among the town departments that have weighed in on this subject is the Police Department. The Police Department sent a letter expressing their comments on the site, and the bottom line of the Police Department's view of this matter is that they do not expect traffic or safety concerns to be an issue at this site. Now, with that, I would like to address a couple of the most sort of hotly contested or raised issues regarding this proposal. The first is traffic. And I'm not speaking about this in a sort of a technical way, but I am speaking with respect to something that Mr. Albert raised, which is what are the standards that govern this Board's review of this proposal? And I would like to direct the Board's attention to one of the recent cases that was raised by one of the legal analyses that Mr. Albert referred to that had been submitted by a neighbor. There is a case that the neighbor cited, which is the Primrose School franchising company franchising company versus the town of Natick. It's a land court case from 2013. And they cited that case for the proposition that this Board can in fact impose a special permit because this project involves new construction. What that analysis that was submitted to the Board did not include was the next case, the next reported decision in that same matter. What happened in that case was, and it was a childcare facility in Natick. There was a question that was decided in the 2013 land court decision as to whether or not a special permit could be imposed. And then the matter was sent from the land court back down to the Planning Board in Natick. The Planning Board imposed various conditions, including a condition that limited the number of children that could be, that could attend the childcare facility in that case. The proponent appealed those conditions. It went back up to the land court, to the same judge, Judge Sands in 2015. And Judge Sands issued a decision that, among other things, stated that, under the Dover Amendment, the limitation on the number of children was unreasonable. Not because the number itself was unreasonable, but because, in his view, the Planning Board did not have the authority to issue a permit that purported to limit the number of children. And his rationale was that it is not the Planning Board's purview or department to determine, for example, the number of children as a way of trying to address traffic concerns. And I'd like to just take a moment and read an excerpt from this 2015 decision. I'm reading from the decision now, Judge Sands. However, the Dover Amendment does countenance local zoning authorities retaining certain limited authority to regulate Dover Amendment facilities, but only under limited circumstances enumerated by the Dover Amendment. To wit, the town may impose reasonable regulations concerning bulk height of structures determining yard sizes, lot area setbacks, open space, parking, and building coverage. Based on the clear language of 40A Section 3, this court in the first decision noted that imposing reasonable frontage and lot size requirements was within the authority of the ZBA. I'm sorry, it was the ZBA, not the Planning Board. However, 40A is silent as to issues relating to site access and vehicular traffic. While local zoning authorities may apply limited restrictions to land and structures used in connection with the Dover Amendment facility, authority to regulate the actual use of the facility is vested in the Massachusetts Department of Early Education Care. And then cites the applicable statute and regulations. Then it discusses how the number of children is regulated in any given facility is regulated by by the regulations promulgated by that particular agency. Then he says, "In view of the foregoing, Chapter 40A Section 3 did not give the ZBA authority to limit the amount of students that the facility may house as a means of reducing vehicular traffic to and from the locus. As such, I find that Condition 4, that's the condition that imposed the limit on the number of children, is unreasonable to the extent that it purports to condition approval of the project upon a cap on the maximum number of enrollees in the facility." In this case, the same thing is true. The number of children that can be at this facility is going to be determined by the size of the building and by the license that is issued by the state agency, who regulates these facilities very carefully and extensively. We are, we know that there is a lot of concern about traffic on Central Avenue. That's very clear. But I would suggest to the Board that in light of a decision like the one that I just read you, that the Board has to keep in mind that it has very limited authority. that the board has to keep in mind that it has very limited authority to attempt to impose regulations on this building or this proposal as a way of trying to address traffic concerns. That is the case that in the land court decision that I just quoted from, the, the court, Judge Sands said, "That's not a reasonable regulation" to the, you know, that's not a reasonable attempt to impose regulations under Chapter 40A Section 3. So we are not ignoring traffic. We are not saying that traffic is not a valid concern. But I am suggesting that this board has limited authority to try to control that by measures such as putting a cap on the number of students or reducing the size of the building, you know, as a method of trying to de facto put a cap on the number of students and thereby reduce traffic. Notwithstanding all that, we, as Ms. Day will discuss, there is an intention to have a cap on the number of students and we, you know, are willing to live with that. We think that the, that the appropriate cap for this building is, is 115, 115 children. And, and that that, as, as one of these legal analyses pointed out, that is also interrelated with the number of staff that is required by these regulations and that in turn drives the parking requirements. So we are, we are, we understand that traffic is a legitimate concern. We understand that more vehicles you know, affects traffic. But we, we believe that we have struck a reasonable balance by agreeing to limit at the moment the number of children to 115. And as Ms. Day will discuss, that will in fact result in far fewer than 100, you know, than that number of vehicles, because there are many, many families that have more than one children, one child enrolled in these, in Needham Children's Centers programs. So there is, there is far less than a one-to-one correlation between the number of children and the number of vehicles. Furthermore, as Ms. Day will explain, it is not her intention to start off with 115 children. Her projected initial enrollment, as she will discuss, is 95 children. And she's going to be presenting an analysis based on their actual data, their actual operational data from many years as to how many vehicles that will generate and when those vehicles will arrive and depart. So that's, I, I wanted to make those comments with respect to traffic. With respect to the concern that has been frequently expressed that cars may back up and spill out onto Central Avenue from the drop off area, as I mentioned before, the, the driveway is 205 feet long before you even get to the to the drop off area. I think it's standard that you can allocate approximately 20 feet per vehicle, which would mean you can have 10 vehicles. Even if they all arrive at the same time, you could have 10 vehicles stacked up there, not including any vehicles that are parked and not including any vehicles that are engaged in the act of dropping off their children. Ms. Day's data, and again, this is, this is based on actual arrival times and departure times. Ms. Day's data will show that with with 95 children, there will never be a time, never be a sort of a block of arrival time when there is more than 10 vehicles anticipated showing up at the site at any one particular time. And they have a plan to address that in the extremely unlikely event that that does start to materialize.
Mr. Chairman, just a one quick, quick question before we leave that. Evans, have you given us the full case history of the Primrose and Natick case?
I am aware of two, two decisions. I can give you the sites if that's what you're asking.
That would be fine.
Okay, so the first decision, the first Primrose decision, which is referenced in one of the letters that was submitted to the board. The only citation I have for it is a Westlaw citation, which is 2013 WL That's a 2013 land court decision. The, the 2015 decision that I was reading from also has a Westlaw decision. It's 2015 2015 Westlaw or WL
And as far as you know, the 2015 land court decision was the latest?
Yes, but I must say I have not, you know, double checked that. So I don't know if there is a further decision. I don't want to represent to you that I have, that I can positively state that there isn't any subsequent decision. I don't, I don't believe there is, but I'm not 100% sure of that.
All right.
So in, in some, with respect to the concern about the drop off, given the length of the, of the driveway, the availability of many spaces in the proximity of the drop off area for parents to park if they need to. The fact that the exit line is as long as the entrance line. And so we, we think that the chance of vehicles spilling out onto Central Avenue is nil. And moreover, as Ms. Day will explain, in the extremely unlikely event that that were to begin to materialize, they have a plan for dealing with it, that they have sort of learned from experience through COVID when everybody was forced to have a to make sure that there were not, there were very few people arriving at the same time and they, they learned how to live with that requirement. And the parents have not only cooperated with that, but I think Ms. Day will say, you know, actually liked it because it meant that pickup and drop off was very efficient. With respect to the second, the question of setback, I know that that's a, been a concern that people have expressed, that the building should be set further back. We have tried to move the building back. As I said, we started out at 40 feet and we you know, moved, we have now moved it back to a proposed setback of 64 feet. I've prepared a small chart that speaks to the setbacks of various buildings on the east side of Central Avenue in this vicinity. Mark, if you could switch to what we were referring to as sheet number five, please. Okay, is there a way to blow this up a little bit? Okay, thank you. So what this chart is intended to show is the setback from Central Avenue of the various structures on the east, on the same side of Central Avenue as 1688 in the space from Star Ridge Road to Charles River Street. Now, so there's, the green is the, what we're proposing, 64 feet. The blue are the setbacks that I would, I would argue are either less than or comparable to ours. As, as you can see, there are five that fall into that category. Then in the white, there are four where the setback is greater. Three of those at 1652, 16 Country Way and 7 Country Way are corner lots that actually face different roads. The only one that is you know, a greater setback, a significantly greater setback is the Temple Aaliyah next door. That temple is a much, much larger building than we are proposing. And it has its parking in front of the building, between the building and Central Avenue, or at least it has a substantial amount of its parking in front of the building. And we think that as an aesthetic matter, what we are proposing, that that's not appropriate. But the reason I offer you this, offer the board this chart is to indicate to you that not all the buildings on the eastern side of Central Avenue are set back as far, even as far as what we are proposing. And we think that this proposal in terms of setback is you know, consistent with a number of the setbacks along Central Avenue. In addition, Mark, if you could go back to the sheet that we were looking at before, please. If, if you look at this, the, the, the traffic circulation that we're proposing with this small island that has five trees on it or five bushes. That's an important part of the, of the site circulation design to allow cars to come in, drop off, move around that island and drive back out. And then the parking, the where cars, you know, people actually get out of their vehicles is, is out of the line of that traffic circulation. If you were to try to move this building back further, you would, you, you can't make that turnaround area any smaller. The only way that you can move this building back further is by knocking down the barn. And that has been suggested as something that we should be willing to do. We don't think that if the board were to require us to knock down the barn in order to move the building back further, that that would be a reasonable regulation or reasonable requirement. It is true that 40A Section 3 does authorize the board to make reasonable reg, regulations with respect to, among other things, setback. But if the board were to say, "We want you to move this building further back and knock down the barn", in our view, that is not a reasonable regulation for a few reasons. First of all, just, and, and Mr. Glusing can speak to this better than I, but just to knock down that barn would cost approximately $30,000. But more importantly, the barn, it's an, it's a largely wooden structure. To rebuild that barn to, would cost probably in excess of $200,000. In other words, requiring us to knock that barn down is imposing a serious cost on the applicant for a modest benefit in, in additional setback of the building. It would also mean, for example, that unless everybody wanted to have all the parking in front of the building, between the building and Central Avenue, which presumably nobody on Central Avenue wants, we're now pushing the parking further back into the wooded area on the back part of the lot. The lot is starting to get narrower, the traffic circulation and the, you know, in order to have a wide enough, you know, pickup and drop off area as well as your, you know, if you start to move further back, you are also starting to address issues about how wide the lot has to be. The town has a, has a zoning bylaw requirement, basically that the, that the minimum frontage has to be as wide at the back of the building, that, I'm sorry. The front, the width of the lot has to be as wide as the minimum required frontage at the back of the building. This is a pie shaped lot, so that also restricts how far back you can push the building. But again, if you're requiring the, the applicant to incur a multi-hundred thousand dollar penalty to achieve an additional 30 or 40 feet of setback, we don't think that that's a reasonable restriction to impose. In addition, Mr.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Sure.
Have you investigated what it might cost to move it?
There are, well, the, the, the short answer is no, but the there are other issues in play, for example, about moving the building back. In the area where there is, where the existing barn is now, there's a lot of ledge that is not very far below the surface. And in fact, I would say Mr. Glossa could probably speak to that better. Certainly, Mr. Glossa could speak to that better than I could. But it's not, not all parts of this lot are the same in terms of being able to build. So the short answer to your question, Mr. Jacobs, is no, we have not specifically looked into how much it would cost to move the, the barn. I know it's a wooden structure. I've been inside it. I don't know how readily such structures can be moved. But I would also say that if we start moving everything further back on the lot, this back part of the lot is wooded, and now you're starting to cut down more trees. You are now placing this structure closer to the back lots of some of these neighbors on Country Way, to the backyards of these neighbors on Country Way. It's not a, it, it, there are people who will be adversely impacted in addition to people who might consider themselves to be beneficially impacted by moving the building further back. In addition, the, the landscaping that we have now come up with at the front of the building means that when this landscaping fills out, and some of it is, you know, relatively fast growing white pine, I believe, but again, Mr. Glusing can speak to this. It's our expectation that this building is going to be largely screened from view as you drive up and down Central Avenue based on the landscaping. And you will not really be able to see the building well until you're close to in front of it. So again, you know, when Mr. Albert said this is a very fact specific, you know, what is a reasonable regulation is a fact specific inquiry. I agree that that is what the courts say. I think when you take into account the amount of landscaping screening that we're going to be putting in place to block the view of the building as you're driving up and down Central Avenue, the cost that would be imposed to knock the barn down or move it, we haven't specifically inquired about that. And the, what in my view would be relatively modest benefit to to moving the building further back, you know, say another, I don't know, whatever people have in mind, another 20, 30, 40 feet. I mean, we, we have now moved it back as far as the neighboring property owned by the Hydman's. So we feel that we have made a good faith effort to address these concerns. In addition, what I was about to say was that one of the things that, that the proponent is looking into quite extensively is that we want, want to use the roof of the barn as well as the roof of the building as platform for solar energy panels. And the, the barn would be, the roof of the barn would be a good use for that. It's a perfectly sound wooden structure. It's something that he has, that he's entitled to retain as an accessory structure. We do not intend to use it for activities relating to the childcare facility except for storage. You know, and we, we would agree to because I, I have seen that there is some suspicion expressed about, well, what is, what is Mr. Mr. Barelli, I mean, it's no secret whose, whose project this is. What is he going to do with this? And, you know, we would agree that we would not use it for any activity relating to the childcare facility other than storage without coming back to the board. So
I've been holding my fire, Evans, and you're raising too many questions in my mind by discussing. So I'm going to interject here to ask a, a couple of questions.
Sure.
We have not seen a lease and I understand that, that we don't have it available. Is Needham Children's Center leasing the entire property or only a portion of the property?
I believe, so Ms. Ms. Day is here. I, I do not believe she is leasing the entire property. I will tell you that it certainly it seems completely reasonable to us that, that if the board issues a permit, whether it's called a special permit or not, if the board issues a permit, it's obviously appropriate for the board, that one of the conditions to be that this building is used solely as a childcare facility. I mean, that's why we're building.
Getting to the issue of the barn, Evans, it's not, it's not the building. I'm sure she's leasing the area where the childcare building is going to be. I'm trying to determine if she is leasing the barn or if Mr. Barelli is keeping control of the barn.
I think at the moment, it's an informal understanding that she can use the barn for storage.
So she is not entering into So she is not entering into, um, a lease for the entire property and she will not have control of the entire property.
I believe that's correct. I believe that's correct.
But she will be leasing, she will, she will be leasing all of the land that is around the barn. She's going to be leasing the parking, she's going to be leasing the driveway, she's going to be leasing the playground. She's going to be leasing the building and there's going to be an island of a, of a wooden building for which she does not have control. Is that what I'm hearing?
I guess technically I'm not sure if that's an accurate description. She's obviously going to be leasing the building. I don't know whether the, you know, as a matter of land use, whether she is going to be quote unquote leasing the parking areas or whether she is going to be given the right to use the parking areas, I'm not sure. I'm not involved in the details of that negotiation.
Okay. I will submit to you at this point, Mr. Huber, that any property which is not, um, part of Ms. Day's control for the Children's Center is not subject to chapter forty A, section three. I'm just throwing that out there right now. I don't want to get into the discussion now because we have a lot to get to. We can discuss this at the end of the hearing after all the presentations, after all the neighbors have had a chance to discuss. But you're giving me reasons why the barn shouldn't be torn down, why the barn, and I agree, two hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money, if that's what it would take to rebuild the barn. But I'm going to keep, keep in my own mind whether the question of the barn is a chapter forty A, section three issue, if it's not part of the Children's Center. And let's just leave that out there for now, please, and move on with the presentation.
Okay. Another issue has been raised that the building is too big. Some people have objected that the building is too big and that it, um, and, uh, that it should be made smaller. And, uh, so I'd like to speak to that for a couple of minutes. Mark, if you could put up, uh, sheet four, please. So this is a, this is a, um, a chart that I've prepared that addresses or that, that, that is intended to speak to the question of the size of this structure in comparison to, uh, what the, um, zoning bylaws require or allow in this district. So the, the first group of, um, requirements are minimums. You have to have a minimum area, minimum frontage, minimum setback, minimum i- in the front side and rear. And if you look at the right hand column, you will see that in each instance, we are well, well above the minimums required. The second group of lines, the last four lines are maximums, the maximum of what is allowed. Maximum of two and a half stories, maximum of thirty-five feet, maximum lot coverage, maximum FAR. And, you know, again, what I would try to point out to the board is that what we are proposing is well below the maximums of what are allowed. The building is twenty-four feet high at its peak, where the zoning allows thirty-five feet. And I would sug- suggest to the board that there are many buildings in the area, many homes in the area that are higher than twenty-four feet at their peaks. This has, this is a one-story building with a, uh, gable roof. Two and a half stories are allowed. This is half of the maximum lot coverage that's allowable in this zoning district. It's a third of the floor area ratio. Could you put on sheet six, please? This is another analysis that I want to offer the board to consider that relates to building size. And what I'm showing here is the width of the building in comparison to, a- as a percentage of the width of the lot. So in a moment, I'll be speaking about the width of the building as an absolute number in comparison to, to structures in the area. But this, um, is intended to demonstrate that, uh, the width of this building, eighty-three feet as proposed, um, on a lot that is two hundred and fifty feet wide is approximately thirty-three percent of the width of the lot. Many, many, all of the item, all of the houses in yellow on both sides of Central Avenue occupy larger percentages of their, of their respective lots. This, um, so this chart shows the width of the, of the various buildings facing central and what percentage of the lot width. The reason I offer this is, yes, eighty-three feet is bigger than some of the buildings, wider than some of the buildings in the area. But it's also on a considerably wider lot. And that is something that I would ask the board to take into account and determine whether or not the size of this building is appropriate for this location. Mark, if you could put up sheet seven, please. The, there's also the absolute, the absolute question is to the width of this building in comparison to properties in the neighborhood. Now, there's a, there's a number of houses on the, uh, western side of Central Avenue that are just, you know, single family homes that are, um, not as wide as this building. But there are many structures, many homes in this area that are as wide or wider than what we are proposing. We've listed them here along with their approximate distance as the crow flies from this building. I think that these, you know, these buildings are within one hundred to three hundred yards of this building. That's, you know, a quarter mile, and I think that's a fair, um, or considerably less than a quarter mile. And I think that's a fair, um, representation as to sort of, if you're saying, well, how does this building fit into the size of buildings in the neighborhood as you're looking at it from Central Avenue? It's eighty-three feet wide. Are there other buildings or homes in the area that are? Could you put that back on, Mark? I think you slipped off of it. There are other buildings in that area, many other homes in that area that are as wide or wider as shown in this chart, within a quarter mile of this building. Not all of them certainly, and a number of the houses on the other side of Central Avenue are not eighty feet wide. But there are many homes, particularly newer ones, that are as wide or wider than this building. So, so these are all things that I would offer for the board's consideration that relate to the size of the building in comparison to the lot that it sits on, in comparison to how far it is setback from the street, in comparison to other homes that have been built in the area in recent years. Okay. So those are the issues that I wanted to specifically address. I'm going to ask now, um, Mark Glusin, who's our architect, to speak to the design features, what the facade is going to look like that's facing Central Avenue and, um, and also discuss the landscaping plan. If you would do that, Mark.
You muted, Mark.
It's hard to find unmute in screen share.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. I'm pleased to have a chance to talk about the architecture and the, and the site design a little bit uh, more from a design professional perspective. I think Mr. Huber has had to discuss the building a couple of times and he's done quite well. I'm not quite sure he's ready to join my drafting pool, but I do appreciate the effort he did. I want to talk a little bit first about the siding of the building. There were several factors that went into how the building orientation, uh, the relationship to Central Avenue and the, and the relationship to the rest of the site. Mrs. Day does not want, was quite adamant from the beginning that she did not want any activity along Central Avenue. That meant she didn't want an entrance on Central Avenue. She didn't want a big visual presence on Central Avenue. She didn't want cars looping through a driveway on Central Avenue. She didn't want parking on Central Avenue. She wanted to, and that's for a matter of safety and privacy for the children. She wanted to have the entrance back inside the site and then the building could function as a screen. We also sided the building close to the Temple Aliyah side of the site, importantly because that is another technically commercial structure. So we have the two commercial structures closer together and that left us a larger negative space and landscaping area and yard between us and, for instance, seventeen oh eight or the other, uh, Charles River Street properties. The, and I think that was critical. It's, um, I know you're, the only other thing I would mention, I don't want to go on about the barn. The assumption was always that the barn was to remain, it's a useful structure, it's in excellent condition. The only thing I'd add to Mr. Huber's comments is that, you know, adopted, adopted the Green Communities Act uh, not too long ago. And the idea that we're going to tear this down, bury it in a hole and build something similar further back in because the owner would have some use for storage and the tenant does have some use for storage. Doesn't seem like a very green idea to me, in addition to the trees that would be removed and all those things. But to go back to the site, uh, so that sets sort of the orientation of the building using the existing drive, trying to keep it up close, Temple Aliyah. There's a possibility to allow them to use parking on some of the high holy days if they need it on the weekends. And so that's, you know, that was something that was in our thoughts and my thoughts as we went through the design. And we did the building, uh, laid out in a way that we thought worked well for Mrs. Day. We have a large expanse of green space and play area as it relates to the neighbors who have their backyards facing us. So they're sort of contiguous to the similar sort of open space. Uh, this area has a variety of trees on it, uh, especially on some of these neighboring properties. And then it's heavily forested here on our site. As far as the building elevations, uh, sorry.
I'm sorry, um, Mark, would the tree line be right at the edge of the parking lot? Did you mention that?
Well, I'll, I'll go through the landscaping. I was going to do the building and then come back to it, but we can do the landscaping now. One sec.
No, no, that's okay. I, I was just wondering about the tree line in the back of the lot, whether, whether.
Yeah, that's an arboridie, so those are those tall screen trees that we use and they go along there. The, the rest of the trees back here are to be left in their natural state.
And they pretty much go right up to the line that I'm seeing, um, where, right, right next to where it says lot area one forty-six oh, oh. That's all, that's all for, forested now?
It's fairly heavy here. There gets to be a little open area through here and then it's heavily forested the rest of the way.
Okay, thank you. That, that was my question.
Okay, I'm going to go to the building and then I'll come back to this meeting. So if that's okay. So if I can get this to fit in this whole pair. So the approach that we took was that we did not want to build a commercial building. Not, not a masonry building, not, you know, and quite often childcare facilities are sort of exuberant, metal paneled, bright colored roofs, a large aluminum storefront, some kind of windows to create brightness and space and light. And what we did, you know, the reality is it's, we recognize it's a ten thousand square foot building. Most of the, most of the rooms are four hundred square feet. That's not going to look like a house when it's done. But what I was trying to do was take residential geometries and treatments and character and finishes and use those and try to break up the building into a series of pieces that would be, uh, similar to a residential style. But of course, it is a larger building. So you can see that, uh, it's a, a gable roof structure, two big sections, and then a gabled roof over the, uh, the large play area which has a higher ceiling. The, instead of doing sort of the storefront type entrances, we use casement windows. We have a series of dormers along the, the spaces to give them a little bit of height. They have ten-foot ceilings in these rooms. You can see the play area is a taller structure. This then is, is the outdoor play area through here. The Central Avenue facade was originally, uh, much simpler. There were concerns from the designer review board that it was a little too simple. Uh, and again, I did that so that there was no attention called to this building. It was very quiet, peaceful, a little bit dull looking element just sitting there, but, uh, we were asked to improve that or we thought that we should improve that. So we have created a series of changes from the beginning would be to create these additional gabled structures that project out from the main gable space. They have bay windows on them. There's a bay window in the center. And we also added a, an eve accent element here, which is also added on the side facing seventeen oh eight. At the entrance to kind of identify it, I started to mimic the barn aesthetic. So the, that space is a little bit higher. It's eleven and a half feet. And used, uh, use the red barn color as there's sort of an accent. So as you come up the driveway, it'll be a key element and you'll see it quite strong visually. But it's a small space. If you're in the site plan, that is right here. So the only element that's different, all, all the materials are wood clavards, board and batten siding, shingle roof. We varied the, shit, the siding width to get a little bit of a interesting look, a little more variety to it. So it wasn't, uh, quite as plain as I was, my first intention was. So tried to give a little bit more life. And I think that that was successful that way, that this, again, breaks down some of the geometries, uh, but they're all the types of character dormers, clavards, board, batten, similar roof overhangs to all the houses in the neighborhood. So it's not a house, but it does have residential architectural elements used in a commercial way so that it fits in. I think one of the complaints in one of the letters I foresaw was, is out of harmony. I think that this would be, uh, well in harmony with the rest of the neighborhood through the scale of the building, which is not very tall. It's going to be shorter than every new house in that neighborhood. And also through the use of the materials and the architectural detail. The, um, I want to go back. So the, as far as the planting, the zoning bylaw does require fairly, fairly extensive screening, uh, but limited to certain abutters. But we initially proposed, um, a, a lot of white pine to do our screening for us. We got some criticism from the design review board. So we have, what, what we've created is a mix of trees, Scotch pine, white pine, cedar on, uh, you know, I can do this, bring this up. Sorry.
Could you enlarge this a little bit, Mark?
Yeah, I'm sorry. And I want to add, this is the summary of changes.
Mark, are these changes that were made after the May twenty-fourth, uh, design review board memo? Cause I've, I've, I've only seen two memos from the design review board, March fourteenth, I think, and then May, May twenty, May twelfth. Eight after May twelfth?
Yes. While we made some changes the first time, uh, they were a little modest. The board was pushing for more, mostly on the Central Avenue side. So the initial changes on Central Ave were to install these bays within this single larger gabled structure. Uh, and they still, they were still commenting about, uh, a lack of variety on that facade. So we added more variety, changed some of the siding material. So we added more variety, changed some of the siding materials to various lists from the, different from there. From the main gable to the front projected cables.
And that was after May twelfth?
Yes.
But the design review board has not had an opportunity to review the changes that you made after May twelfth? Or have they? And we just haven't seen?
No, no, and that's, um. I'll speak out of turn, but that is not unusual. Uh, we often would, design review board often makes comments, sends them to the planning board. The planning board gets them and then when they see the building, they see that yes, in fact, they did respond to. The criticism. You're always free to send it back if that's something.
You have, and you have a narrative that you had, had just put up on the screen before that outlines. Those changes that have been made since May twelfth.
Yeah. So we sent that to you a while. Um, I think, let's find that.
Okay. I don't recall seeing it, but I'll find it if we have it.
Let me dig it out of the screen here.
Uh, ju- just, just to be clear, let me jump in. This, the document that Mark is putting up on the screen now, I had, I had sent a. Um, a memo in which I summarized, um, changes. There were, um, additional changes after that. The document that is up on the screen right now summarizes all the changes. Both before and, and after the. Design Review Board second meeting. Okay. We've been in front of the, we've been in front of the DRB twice.
Right. Okay.
So, so the final summary of changes is that we moved it from, as Evan's pointed out, from forty to sixty four feet. Uh, that Central Avenue elevation has been modified significantly. We've changed the parking layout. We've increased the parking. The. We kept the drop off in circle. We've created a, a queuing lane. On the landscaping, both sides, uh, we've significantly increased from our original proposal. Uh, and again, we have a mix of red cedar, spruce, white pine there, there. We also initially were just screening the Heidemann house seventeen oh eight. We extended that back. All the way along their backyard. So that screen would be significant as it goes back there. We added, uh, foundation plantings along the front, some decorative flowering trees, cherry trees. These are flowering crab which form sort of a higher. Uh, screen, uh, that is, that doesn't totally block out the building, but it. Uh, becomes a foreground screen for the building. And then we have, uh, evergreen plantings down low in between. Uh, cause these trees tend to branch out at about eight, eight to eight feet high or so. Uh, site wise, there, there was someone said we were raising the entire building six feet. The existing plateau for this site, you can see on the topo, is around this existing house. And that is the level of the new finished floor of this building. So it's essentially the same height as the barn. Which is, is all the existing flat area of the site. We did it fill some of the lower area beyond that existing plateau, but not to a height that's higher than the plateau. It's simply the same as the plateau. So the topography at the edge of the site is, would be exactly the same as it is now. And we wrapped that around the front to create an additional lawn area. Uh, we did look at sort of sculpting that, but we felt like it was, uh, better on the screening front to have. A, a slope that's down in the corner about six feet and up here it's about four. If we start planting on top of that. Visually, it becomes a very strong screen and you won't really see the building. Uh, we did some diagrammatic studies of these trees that say eight to ten year maturity for. White pine grow very fast and, and also the caliper required in the zoning bylaw is above average. So. You're not putting in a little four foot saplings here. You, you have to put a significant tree in as you start these screens. And so we will be doing that. So we believe that. In short order, this building will not be something that is any sort of visual impact on the neighborhood. And for the short time that it is, it's a, it's a complimentary building to the neighborhood because it uses. All the same architectural features and geometries and materials as all the, most of the rest of the buildings in the neighborhood except for the temple. And so that's, I think that's kind of the summary of the architecture.
Mr. Chair, could I just request about a five minute pause?
Sure.
Thank you.
I'm gonna recess for five minutes. Evans, can I ask you to, um. Uh, either send or resend that document that Mark had on the screen so that I don't have to spend a lot of time trying to find it?
The summary of changes?
Yeah.
I would like to note that I very carefully organized all of the materials in the packet. And anything I had, I had received. And I believe we have never received that final summary of changes. We received a prior one. But not the final one.
Okay. Um, so are, are you asking me to email it to you now?
No, 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 no. Now we're not, we're not gonna close the hearing tonight.
Yeah, okay.
Evans, I, we would just ask for a full copy of your PowerPoint.
Sure.
Presentation materials?
Yes.
Thanks.
But I, I'd like to get that document separate from the PowerPoint as well.
And. Evans, I would ask, um, if you could send a, a copy to, a, a printed copy. A hard copy of, uh, the, the latest site plan.
Okay.
Is to all of, to all of the members at our houses.
What size is like, is eleven by seventeen sufficient?
Probably.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I picked up a set today at the planning office, so I already have it.
I can pick it up from there too, if there is another copy, but I'm not sure that there is in color.
It, if you don't have any questions, other questions for me right now, I'm just gonna, uh, turn off my camera for a sec.
Sure, great. Mark, I know we're, we are recording. And we are on a recess, but I just want to personally mention that, um. Uh, we, we planted a, um. A, a, um, a Wyman crab apple. For our, in, in honor of our daughter's bat mitzvah. So that was, uh, seventeen years ago. And it, and you have that along this Central Avenue side. I think it's a David Wyman crab apple. That has, that's a lovely tree. And I was very happy to see that on the plans.
Yeah, I have a cou- a couple in my yard and I thought that it was an appropriate way, well, on top of that mound to be able to. Develop something that you can't really, that you have to look through. Because at that spacing, they'll be fairly close to solid, um, join foliage.
Yeah.
And then we could infill the bottom with something, just to have something, a variety of color in the different time of year. Uh, I thought was important and make a nice impact on Central Avenue.
And when it flowers in May, it is absolutely beautiful.
Yeah, yeah, you get, get a few days until the wind comes when they look beautiful.
I see that Marty is back. Adam seems to have stepped away.
I'm back.
And Evans, Evans, you're back?
Yes.
Okay. See if there's anybody, uh. Okay. So we can go back to the proceeding now then. Our break is over. Um, I'm just going to, um, comment on procedure. That, um, I have looked and, um, of the list of attendees, we have four hands raised. Um, and they, they are in order, uh, on my screen. So now I just got a fifth. So, um. Uh, as I said, I'm hoping that, that, that these are in order. Um, and I'm going to read these so that, um, if we don't, if we don't get to. Uh, the attendees tonight, or if we don't get to all of those who have their hands raised. Um, I will, I, I will use this order. At the fir-, at the meeting in August. So that they don't have to rush to get their hands raised in the same order as it, as it is tonight. I have written down the order so that I will keep that order in, in August if they don't get to speak tonight. So they are in order. Holly Clark and then Dave Lazarus and then Patricia Falco. And then Maggie, and I apologize if I mispronounce your last name, Maggie, uh, Bruce Seize. And then, um, Matt Heidemann and then Peter Lyons just raised his hand. So we have, we're up to six. Okay. Um. I turn the floor back over to Mark losing.
Uh, well, as I, well summarized, I think that we've located the building well back. The architecturally, it's broken up into several volumes. We use, uh, all the typical residential features, casement windows, dormers. Regular doorways. The siding materials are all traditionally residential. Materials. So we think that in that way, we in fact do fit in with the character of the neighborhood. Uh, it's a single story structure. It's not gonna dwarf over anything. Uh, visually because of the siding and the screening. And, uh, I think it's, again, I want to emphasize, I think it's important that it be sited. Towards the Temple Aliyah side because that's all the activity. Of parking, drop off, movement is all focused on a commercial side of the lot, not towards any of the residential area. So let's take it back to Evan for the next steps.
Um, you had your hand raised. You have a question?
I do, and I'm not sure, forgive me, this is, uh, for you, Mark, or for, um. Uh, for the engineer, John Glossa. Um, and Evans, uh, I understand if you want to pause after I asked the question. So any of those other members can. Answer the question, but. My question is, if I understand correctly, uh. There's an underground detention basin to catch. Most of the drainage, is that correct? And that, that is located kind of just, I guess, south. Uh, of the, um, roundabout where the drop off would occur.
I'm gonna find that sheet.
We'll find that sheet and, uh. Miss, Mr. Glossa, do you want to speak to this?
Sheet four. Mark, there it is. Um, yes, that's correct. There's an underground detention basin that is. Designed, um, for the purpose of mitigating, um, all of the increase in the rate. Of runoff from the site. Um, including the proposed driveway parking areas and rooftop for the proposed building. So what we did is we just simply use the, um. Massachusetts DEP Stormwater Management Regulations to design our, um, stormwater management system. So. Um, I believe that this is, um. Above and beyond, um, what the, uh. Town of Newton, uh, would normally require in a.
Need, need a. You said Newton, but I think you meant need a.
Need a, what the town of Needham would require in this instance. So it's, it's designed as if we were within a hundred feet of wetlands and with the commercial building or with the. Non-residential building had to meet the Massachusetts Stormwater Standards. And we gave the. Um, whoever planning, uh. I guess the DPW, I'm not really sure who reviewed it, of the town engineering. We gave them the full stormwater management report again. As if we were filing it under the Massachusetts Stormwater Management Regulations.
Thank you. And. There's a retaining wall, I think.
Allow the water time to soak into the ground when it rains. And you're correct. So there's a slope, a six foot slope and water will run off of that, but it's a very small. Area compared to the entire site that's going to be altered. And then that's going to flow into that area with the closed contour. Granted, it's smaller now. But we've already treated or mitigated the flow up on top. So. Now that area is going to act very similar to the way it acts now. And that water does not flow off of the site either out into Central Ave or on to the budding property.
And. There's a three foot setback. Sorry, there's a three foot drop if I mistaken, but I might need to get my prescription revised. Towards Central Avenue.
Correct.
And so would, is it fair to say that some of the some of the spill off? From the driveway. And the top of the presumably it's a grass area there. It's a lawn, I think I see. Is is any water? On this site can a spill on to Central Avenue? Other than. Through that detention basin in the center of the site?
There's a little bit of water that flows from this driveway to the catch basin in Central Ave. But that mirrors, right, that matches the current condition. So currently, if you drove in there, you drive in a driveway. Which is kind of similar to the location of this driveway. It's a little bit more south. But that driveway has no mitigation to it in that runoff runs down that driveway and out into Central Ave. So the site is balanced in the sense of the rates of runoff. Coming off of the site.
What do you mean by balanced?
So the Massachusetts Stormwater Regulations require us to not. Increase the volume of runoff. I mean, the rate of runoff in the two 10, 20, 2, 10, 25 and 100 year storms from a site. So we are not increasing. The rate of runoff from this site at any location in the two 10, 25 and 100 year storms.
Okay. And Lee, that would be recorded as a finding in a decision. Is that correct?
That's that's part of their stormwater report. If you want me to add as this, well, we generally make a finding that that there isn't going to be that. Water impact offsite, but yes, that will be a finding.
That was an initial question that I had as Mark was discussing the site. So. I appreciate the indulgence of the question, Mr. Chair. I return it back to you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Evans, we're. Are we back to you or are you turning it over to Mr. Glossa?
No, I thought the next person to speak would be Pat Day and and perhaps others on behalf of Needham. Children's Center, the anticipated tenant and. Ask Miss Day just to speak a little bit about Needham's Children's Center in general. But also to specifically address. The anticipated vehicle arrival and departure times and volumes.
You have a pour.
Pat, are you there?
I'm here, I'm here.
So there's a part of our presentation materials, there's a. A sheet or two that relates to what Miss Day has to say. Mark, if can you put that up? Yeah, can you, can you? Go to the previous page, go to the previous page and then and just enlarge that if possible, please.
Is that legible? I can do full screen. It just eats up everything.
Before before we get to this, though, Pat, if you want to just sort of. No, you've got two different documents up. Could you get the this one plus the next page?
That's what I was trying to do.
Well, then we'll just put them up one page at a time. But before we speak to these specific details, Pat, if you want to just generally speak about Needham Children's Center for a few minutes, that would be appreciated.
Sure. Can everyone hear me all right?
Looks like it.
Okay, great. So just a little background on Needham Children's Center. We've been around for over 40 years, but I think maybe. Some people that are on this Zoom call probably might not have known we exist. In the 40 years we've been in business, we do not have a sign. A lot of our. Our families are from the Needham area. And then if they have siblings, that generates a lot of the children that come at the to the center, but. In 1980. We formed a full time childcare facility, fully insured and licensed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And. In 1997, we were nationally accredited. Right now, we have 113 children at the Baptist site. And about. 25 to 20% of those children are siblings. And. Needham Children's Center is losing its home. The Baptist Church that we've been very happily. Housed in for over 40 years has decided to close the stores, and I think that's. Very sad for us. But it's a reality and. The, I think that. The church, I wanted to say that the church is discussing the future of the congregation and the physical building now, and they've been in a three year self study. So this isn't news to us. You know, we work in collaboration with the places that we rent from. And so we've known for over two years that this was a possibility. And it's taken us over two years to what we feel is find a suitable location, given. The parameters of what we really wanted for quality childcare and what's available in the town. It's an expensive place to live and it's also an expensive place to find rental space. But this really met all our checked all our boxes. And this was a, you know, group decision of there's a lot of us, you know, thinking about our next step. And I think that. A lot of time and consideration went into that decision to move ahead on this spot and. I just want to give you a little bit of background and that is that I remember when N C C was first a concept and it took nine months. To make it a reality. And that was back in 1980. Back then, over 40 years ago, childcare ideas flowed freely and the mission and dedication to the families of Needham and the surrounding towns. Towns held strong, even as N C C faced some challenges about being the first. We were one of the first childcare in this area at that time. If you guys remember 1980, there was a financial crunch then and. I think. Our friends wanted to, our. Moms wanted to join the workforce and help out. And that's how we started really. And we. First went to the first parachutarian church. And we started there and within a couple of months, the first Baptist Church came to us. And requested that could we do the same thing with them, rent some space? Wasn't the way to start out a business, you know, the usual, you know, template of starting a business, but. We said, sure, okay, we'll rent some space. And that's how it all started. So all through the years, we've been. I think we've been the first in a lot of different things or one of the first and. And now, and we've always worked in collaboration and I was hoping, we're all were hoping that, you know, with the new space, that it could be a collaboration with the neighborhood. Just have to have a caveat that I brought my children up on Oxbow Road. So I'm very, very familiar with this area. So I guess one of the most important things for our families is safety. Let's see, what's one of the top priorities is safety of the children. And so that has to. Come with the caveat that we also have to look at the facility. And the safe entering and exiting of a building is key. Right now, because back in 1980, you know, things were a little bit different. The port of selectmen, you know, we had a parking permit. And we have, we work out of two town lots where we have five spaces each that really are designated, they're designated like 30 minute drop. Places and we've had to adapt to. Lots of pickup and drop off. Dingeencies over the years. I don't know if you remember Buddy Parking, but Buddy Parking happened over at by our Unitarian Church location, and that was kind of interesting that I did work on that. And now with COVID, it became very clear that we really had to look at. Pickup and drop off and who should be in the building and how we how that should happen. And what's invested just the children so they get in safely, but we're not like throwing them in or saying, okay. You know, we really had to work at that and it it took a while and it. Now we've realized that this pickup and drop off is not something that was just a little bit of COVID at the time. We've been doing it for over a year now and it's been highly successful and the parents love it. We've had to change little procedures like that morning drop off where you say, okay, this is what happened with my child's evening and with the babies, you know, this is when they were fed. Now that's all done by iPad. So you don't have big conversations during COVID, we have testation sheets where we really wanted to see the parents faces and say. You know, you know, how is your day? Have you done any traveling? What's going, you know? And the parents have been. The parents have the same level of want for safety and care for their kids. So making these changes. Was, you know, took a while, took a lot, took like a little village, but we did it. And so when we looked at this space, we were looking at it at new eyes. We were looking at it. As the interior building of having space for children. And we were looking at the exterior part of the building giving. Safety, safety for the families, but these are Needham families traveling Needham roads for the care of Needham children. So obviously, any kind of traffic impact is very important to us and we want to make sure we do everything. That the planning board recommends to make sure that everybody's safe. So with that in mind. I can do the exterior, but I did want to say this about the space because I know people are talking about the size of the building. And I think it's really important for me to state. Way back and years ago. You know, I felt it was really important, we felt it was really important that the children have a play space. And I think you can relate now with COVID. If you take a 420 square foot room, since something like that, the state regulation is 35 square feet child. Okay, during COVID, it changed to 42 square feet and that really was a disadvantage to a lot of childcare. But not us, because Baptist Church had had that right from day one. All our rooms are much larger than the children we put in them. And so when we had to take out furniture, we had to do social distancing and the children had to wear masks and eating was a problem because now you had to have. You had to have social distance when the children ate. We were able to accomplish that rather quickly. And so when this building came into existence, Mark will tell you, like I would say, this, we don't want this. It was all because we were trying to, we're trying to base it on our experience, what we know about childcare, what children need and what they need in the future. Going forward now. And I just sort of reiterate that that is two things. One is the play area and one is the size of the rooms. 420 square foot room or 430 square foot room is only going to house 10 children if you use the 42 feet. And let's just think of that, we get 10 children, 30 to six, five days a week, two years, two weeks a year, say that scenario. And now let's look at us during COVID. I can, we're in the room that only one of us could be in. We had fixed groups, which meant none of us could be in the classroom with the children. But there were the children in that room. Now picture yourself at home. In a hotel room sized room at your house. Say that's like 390 square feet, something like at a hotel room. And you're there doing your Zoom calls, doing your work and you're one person. So these children are in it, nine and 10 children in that same space. safety, safety for the families. But these are Needham families traveling Needham roads for the care of Needham children. So obviously, any kind of traffic impact is very important to us, and we want to make sure we do everything that the planning board recommends to make sure that everybody's safe. So with that in mind, I can do the exterior, but I did want to say this about the space, because I know people are talking about the size of the building. And I think it's really important for me to state, way back in years ago, you know, I felt it was really important, we felt it was really important that the children have a play space. And I think you can relate now with COVID. If you take a four-hundred-and-twenty-square-foot room, since something like that, the state regulation is thirty-five square feet per child. Okay, during COVID, it changed to forty-two square feet, and that really was a disadvantage to a lot of childcare. But not us, because Baptist church had had that right from day one. All our rooms are much larger than the children we put in them. And so when we had to take out furniture, we had to do social distancing, and the children had to wear masks, and eating was a problem, because now you had to have, you had to have social distance when the children ate. We were able to accomplish that rather quickly. And so when this building came into existence, Mark will tell you, like I would say, this, we don't want this. It was all because we were trying to, we were trying to base it on our experience, what we know about childcare, what children need, and what they need in the future, going forward now. And I just sort of reiterate that, that there's two things. One is the play area, and one is the size of the rooms. Four-hundred-and-twenty-square-foot room or four-hundred-and-thirty-square-foot room is only going to house ten children, if you use the forty-two feet. And let's just think of that, we've got ten children, thirty to six, five days a week, fifty weeks a year, say that scenario. And now let's look at us during COVID. I can, we're in the room that only one of us could be in. We had fixed groups, which meant none of us could be in the classroom with the children. But there were the children in that room. Now picture yourself at home in a hotel room-sized room at your house. Say that's like three-hundred-and-ninety square feet, something like that, a hotel room. And you're there doing your Zoom calls, doing your work, and you're one person. So these children are in it, nine and ten children in that same space. And our feeling was, and we always had it at Baptist Church, that they needed additional space. They needed if it was inclement weather, they needed if there was a special project. They need to get out and be able to be in a different space. And it was very important to us, especially with the children that present themselves over the year, the children that you want to be, meet ADA requirements, the children, the toddlers that come in presenting with low muscle tone. And they're not walking right now with our I-2 usage, they have to climb seven stairs. You know? Even with two greeters, they have to climb seven stairs to get to their room, or we have to carry them. So this space gives us all those things, and I don't want to go on and on and on and on. But I just want to say, just as Mark has really well thought out what our requests were, what were. And, you know, all of us have sort of designed this facility for the ninety-eight percent of the children in the program that are, come from Needham, what they're going to need in the next five, ten, fifteen years, not what they needed pre-COVID and during COVID, what they're going to need now. I think that's what we've done. And so when you look, if we can go back to that, the issue about them going in and out, you can, for the last year, the parents park, will park right very close to the door. We have two greeters. The parents come in and out forty-five seconds or less. If they need more time, there's space for them. The parents like it. They actually have seen a decrease in illness in their children, and we've seen a decrease in illness in, within the classrooms. There's always time for parents to have, you know, if a child has that new nebulizer or apipen or something like that, or that need to have a conversation, there's parking. But this in and out allows them to get to work, do what they have to, get back to their kids. So we do not project that there would be any kind of massive backup, and we don't want it. And we'll do everything we can to make sure that doesn't happen. And if you look at this chart, I just want to tell you about a little bit about this chart. So what we did, this is one month of sign-in sheets for February twenty-twenty, that's pre-COVID. Okay? And we're not the numbers people, we're the nurturers. So what we did was, we took all of these and sort of looked at, you know, how, how, these are sign-in sheets, and they're, they're required by law. So there's sign-in and sign-out, when the children sign-in, sign-out, pre-COVID numbers. And we can get a fairly accurate visualization of how the children come in and out with their families. We can also do it by looking out this window and notice that there's never huge backups. But I know that, you know, if you are a neighbor on Central Ave in this area, or I lived on Oxbow, that you really want us to be crystal clear that we're going to do everything possible not to create any more disturbance on a busy street. And there's no way I can tell you it's not a busy street. I used to live right off of it. I brought, we brought our children there. The children learned how to drive a car in that area. So, but the facts are that this is approximately how the children come in. During COVID, we used staggered drop-offs that were very specific. And we think that in the beginning, with the detail that we need to do this, because this is a new site, a new facility. And even though we've got tried and true forty years of experience, and we'd like to tell you, we know exactly what we're doing, we have to be honest, and we have to make sure that we're enough, that we've dotted all our i's and crossed all our t's. Trying to think what else I could tell you about. I could, maybe you have more questions for me about the drop-off and pickup?
So, let me, let me just jump in here.
Thanks, thanks, having, I've got to tell you, I'm a little nervous, but that's okay.
That's okay, that's okay. So what, what this chart represents for the members of the board is they have, they have gone through those stacks of sign-in sheets, which give you an actual indication of, not an actual indication, they give you the actual arrival and departure times of the various families. There's been a, and what this chart, what this chart shows the board is several things that are important to the concerns that have been raised. And it is based on ninety-five children, and the reason it's based on ninety-five children is because, although Pat didn't say this when she was speaking, the anticipated initial enrollment is ninety-five children. It's not a hundred and fifteen. We are asking for a limit of a hundred and fifteen, because the site and the building can accommodate that number, and we anticipate that the number may grow from ninety-five to one-fifteen, and one-fifteen is a close, close to the current licensing, currently licensed number of children, although the sites and the facilities are very different. So this is based on ninety-five children, and what you can see from this is, this, this is actual data as to the number of vehicles that that, that is required to get those ninety-five children on and off-site. And it also shows what times they show up. Now, there's been this reference to staggered pickups and drop-offs. And what we mean by that in the real world, and the way it's actually worked, is that the parents are, for lack of a better word, sort of self-staggering. In the period between seven-thirty and nine PM, I'm sorry, nine AM, parents tend to arrive at different times. And except during the pandemic, except during COVID, that was not mandated. That's the way it worked out, that parents actually showed up with their children. And so this data, these charts, and these number of vehicles that are arriving, if you look at, for example, Wednesday, right? What this shows is that the total number of vehicles, excluding staff, the total number of vehicles in that seven-to-nine-fifteen time period is fifty vehicles. And then in the afternoon, there's three vans that show up, which are, is part of the after-school program. That's how many vehicles we anticipate, based on actual historical data, will be required to get those children onsite. Then there's also the staff vehicles in the right-hand column. If the, if the number were to increase to one-fifteen, which is not the initial plan, then the, you know, you could extrapolate similar distribution of arrival and departure times. Furthermore, what we're saying at the top of this chart is, if for some reason these projections don't turn out to mirror historical behavior of the parents, I'm sorry, if the parent's actual behavior doesn't turn out to mirror their historical behavior, so if these projections are not what actually happens, then the fallback position for NCC is to start imposing a system similar to what they have done with the parents during the COVID, when parents are actually given arrival times and departure times, and parents are also, you know, in communication with the school and are told when they can arrive. That's a system that NCC has used during the pandemic. It's worked well, the parents are used to it. They, they actually like it for parents who want to minimize the amount of time that they spend arriving, dropping off, and leaving. So, you know, we're not saying to the board, we will tell ten parents that they have to arrive between seven and seven-thirty, and then we'll tell another ten parents that they have to arrive between seven-thirty and eight. We don't think that that's necessary. We don't think it's going, given this data, we don't think, and given the amount of space that's available on this site and the length of cars that can queue at any one time, we think that that's not going to be necessary. But in the unlikely event that it does, that, you know, our projections don't turn out to be accurate, and parents start arriving more in clumps than we anticipate, then Needham Children's Center has the precedent and the ability to impose restrictions on parents as to when they can arrive for pickup and drop-off. So that's what this chart is intended to represent. And on the previous page, there's some data, Mark, could you flip back to the previous page, please? There's some data about hours of operation and, and some of the features of the, of the sort of pickup and drop-off plan. The hours of operation are shown here, seven-thirty AM to six PM. It's expected that staff, that opening staff will be there before that time period, before seven-thirty, and will typically be leaving, but, you know, at the end of the day, there is a part-time program, there's an after-school program. So when we give you these numbers of ninety-five, there are not going to be ninety-five children arriving there, you know, first thing in the morning. That's the total number of all the various programs that are, make up part of the, the children's population. The the expectation is that the staff will be no more than sixteen staff members and two administrators on peak days. Not all of the days of the week will be peak days. And not all staff will be present or arrive at the same time. The, you know, the, the parking area that there will be, I think this was one of the comments that he was made by either Mr. Diaz and/or Tony Delgazo, that there should be designated parking for short-term parking and handicap parking, which there certainly is and will be. The, as was previously mentioned, the children are going to be entering at the back of the building. That's where the main entrance is. There will be greeters there to assist the children and to assist the parents getting their children out of the cars into the building. That's where the sign-in is determined, the, and the the greeters all have, you know, cell phones and laptops, as, as Ms. Day was mentioning. If the parents need more than that typical forty-five seconds for just a drop-off, there's, there's going to be plenty of empty parking spaces for them to do that. And she has alluded to detail, just in case it's not clear what she meant by that, we are agreeing that for at least the first few weeks, we will have a police detail there during the peak hours to assist with any circulation issues and to assist with any issues at the entrance and exit of the property. And our, our proposal is that that continue for the first several weeks, and only thereafter if, in the judgment of the police chief, it's necessary. We're pretty confident that it's not going to be necessary, but we will, you know, defer to the judgment of the police chief as to the extent to which that is necessary. So those are some additional features of what the proposal is for controlling arrivals, departures, and traffic flow on the site. And as I mentioned before, if our projections that are shown on the next page turn out not to be accurate as to when parents arrive, and I don't see any reason why they wouldn't be, since they are, they're not just guesswork or hope, these are based on actual arrival times of parents in the past. If that turns out not to be the case in the future, then NCC would implement a plan that is more like the, the COVID drop-off protocols that they've been using for the last year.
Can I just say thank you? Thank you for doing that, Em.
So it sounds like you'd be willing to have a, a condition that mirrors what you just said.
That's correct.
And would there be a staggered plan that could be part of the record and part of the condition that says that if, if, if the traffic, if the drop-off traffic exceeds a certain objective standard, which I don't quite know what that is yet, but, you know, if it spills out onto Central Avenue, but I'm thinking maybe a little bit different than just saying that, trying to make it so that the, the drop-off doesn't go on to the sidewalk or some, you know, within a certain number of feet from the sidewalk, then there is this plan that could be part of the record that Needham Children's Center is prepared to implement.
Yes, I think we can work on, I think we can work on the, you know, as is often the case when the, you know, when a proposed decision is issued, there's some back and forth about the language. But we can certainly commit to working on language that will reflect what you're describing, and with the goal of saying, in essence, that we don't anticipate that stacking is going to get anywhere close to the sidewalk. But if it does, then we'll implement some different protocol for, to, to see to it that that doesn't happen.
I could just reiterate, I know it's not definitive, but take the case of masking with the children and what we're doing. The, the parents are so in tune with safety for the children that, I know we have, we would have it in writing, we have these contingency plans. But I want to say that I have such confidence in the Needham families. And, you know, I can't, I would hope that not one of them would think that was all right to idle near a sidewalk or idler park on Central Ave. And part of our, even though we need contingency plans that are, you know, strong, part of our information and training to parents and staff is going to be exactly that. It's going to be, these are not recommendations. This is what you will do if you want your child to attend Needham Children's Center, because safety has got to be the priority.
I'm going to raise a question now while, while you hear this, Day. Oh, and welcome, by the way. One of the comments that we got from one of the neighbors is that your program talks about events that you have where parents are invited to attend. And if you've got, you know, ninety-five children and you're going to have one of these events, you're not, you're probably going to have more than thirty-five cars showing up to one of these events. Probably, you probably would have staff there also, so, you know, it's, um, what the, what's the issue for these events for thirty-five parking spaces? Do you, do you really have the room to park when you're having one of these events where the parents are invited? And you're going to have a lot of parents there?
I can speak to that. In years past, we like the events, we celebrate everything. We think it's We think it's important for the children to learn about different cultures and, you know, we celebrate it. So we have, we have this holiday party, we have it on a Saturday. And that's when the parking lot was, was free, like the municipal parking lots. We, the, the holiday parties now are internal within the classrooms so they can, they're not everybody all together. And another one we have, it's really well-attended, is our interactive art show. It's amazing what the children do. And right here in the Baptist church, there's two levels of big rooms, one's over 2,500 square feet and our after-school room is 3,100 square feet. You can see this is a lot less at the new facility, but that is just such a big event where the children actually work all year long, creating Needham Farmer's Market one year and the parents get involved and it's very hands-on.
Pat, let me just jump in. Let me just jump in here because I think what Mr. Alfred is asking is-
I've got his point and I'll get to it. I think what I'm saying is that now we've come to COVID and we've seen what happens with large gatherings. And if they're, like, we have a family night at Rosemary Pool, things like that that are off-site now that we can do for the children and that we're more likely to evolve these special celebrations in a much more smaller venue within Needham Children's Center or off-site. Is that, that's what you were talking about?
Well, the off-site answer may, may answer the question to some extent that, that if you're having an event where you're going to anticipate having more than 35 bars, you'd have to have it off-site.
Exactly, no, and, no. And we don't have, I guess what I was trying to say is, the venue that we have at the Baptist Church is not available here. And I would, I would say that now those things have, were evolved into something different. So things that we could have done in the past have to evolve, looking at the space and looking at, you have to be inventive, you have to, it's a new frontier. And if we want to have a large venue, then we wouldn't have it in that space because we would not have filled with parking. And that's fine.
So it seems to me, Mr. Alfred, that this, this discussion could lend itself to a condition that essentially, you know, if there are events that involve parents attending for, you know, rather than just picking up and dropping off, the condition would be that the events cannot exceed the available parking.
Yep.
Exactly.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Block.
Can I ask a couple of questions to Ms. Day?
Sure, go ahead.
Again, welcome. I know it can be nerve-wracking and I'm sure a lot of people have a number of questions, but I'm not necessarily saying this is going to lead to that section of the, of the hearing, although I think you have answered, you've done an exceptional job of answering and satisfying a lot of the questions and curiosity. Many people have had you clearly over the course of 40 years take seriously the safety of the kids that are coming and going, the parents and the staff, and you do what appears to be your absolute most to accommodate those and the families. And yet you recognize this is a business for Needham families in Needham, on Needham Roads, and that you would, you know, like to find some balance of accommodation. I think one of the greatest concerns with respect to the traffic is whether people can get out of their driveways, but we'll address that momentarily. The, the questions that I had specifically about the parking arrangement and the drop-off and pickup is to what extent can you enforce some kind of stage to pick-up-drop-off schedule? In other words, the theoretical plan is, step one, we'll see how it goes. Generally, based on the empirical evidence that you have by experience pre-COVID, the flow happened in a staggered way. And that evidence has been very helpful here. And that at step two, if it seems as though there are more cars queuing on a regular basis, that you would implement a more stringent pick-up-drop-off schedule. My question is, what, how do we enforce that step two?
Well, we've done it during COVID. One of the first things we did was because we had to change our hours because of the fixed rooms and you couldn't intermingle, the greeters weren't allowed to go into the classrooms. There's so many restrictions that the very first thing we did was we surveyed the staff and we, the administration surveyed the staff and we surveyed the parents. We'd say, okay, what's your situation? Are you going to be working from home? Do you need five days' care? Can you, can you drop it to three days? Could you work a nine-to-three schedule? You know, what, how, how could you help alleviate overcrowding in classrooms and overcrowding in the greeting areas? We were so concerned with queuing up, this is pedestrian queuing up. So you get out of your car, which is very close, but then you queue up, very, very concerned that, then the parents and the kids would all want to hug and get together. We could control it in the classrooms, but as we waited to go through the assestation sheets and everything, that was a real concern of us. So we, we surveyed and we looked at the data. We tried to create an environment with the staff, we got together with the staff and create an environment that was going to handle this and keep the kids safe. And so it happened two different ways in either building because now the buildings are different. The ages and stages of the children are different. Therefore, you, you had to make a plan that was going to meet that criteria. Also, at the Unitarian, you have a double door and the church itself is closed except for the daycare. So you have a double door, then you have to go downstairs and then there's a knock double door that, all our buildings are secure. You have to get in with a lock, double door. So that building, we had to create a different environment, which actually works. Anyway, let me get to the point. The point is, we survey, when then we, then what we did is we looked at who had siblings because you can't have one program ending at 4:30 or one you go and you have to pick up by 4:30 and now a sibling can't get picked up till 5:00 or one gets picked up before. So we had to look at siblings. We put it all together and created a spreadsheet. And we gave the parents a parameter of when they could come in and, and they had to stick to it or we wouldn't let them in. And not only that, with the assestation sheets, you know, if a child was presenting at all, they weren't let in. Now, at the Unitarian Church, it's different now because you've got to go down those steps and your greeters have got to be downstairs. So the parents get to the parking lot and call. So we had that procedure too, where we could actually say to parents, and we did, I'm sorry, you cannot come in right now, we'll, we'll call you back when it's your turn. And that alleviated the problem of packing the kids together and making it unsafe. So we, we work pretty hard at making sure that it's safe. We're not perfect by any means and people fall through the cracks. But if you want to come to Needham Children's Center, then, and this is what the surveys say, and this looks like it's going to work a little bit, you've got to follow the rules, especially during COVID.
Are you going to keep the facility at the, at the first parish? And this facility is only going to be replacing what's at Baptist? Or are you combining the two into this facility?
No, there's not enough room. If we want to keep that place space, which we feel is vital to the high quality of care for really young children now, then there's no room.
So you're going to continue to have two facilities?
There's, there's two reasons for that, too. The Unitarian Church is not closing its doors and we've had a 40-year relationship with them. As I said, it's a collaborative relationship. We've shared space there with them and we see no reason to, we can't combine and, and service the children that we need to service with the town at Needham. I mean, right now, if you want an infant space here, you're looking at, what is it? A year, a year, that's a year for an infant space. So there's a huge need in the town and, yeah, I think it's going to be hard to, like, figure out finances, but it's really important for the families of Needham to have, have these facilities available to them.
Okay.
But the, that, the Unitarian Church-
Pat, Pat, let me just, Pat, let me just jump in because I, I feel like you've answered Mr. Alfred's question and we still have a lot of things to get through.
Yes, yes, thank you. Yes, Jane.
I could go on. Thank you so much, Evan Swart.
I, I have three questions and they, some of them relate to what's been already shown and I just want clarifications. And perhaps my question also relates to what is going to be presented in the traffic studies, but let me ask them, if the, if the plan could be put up, that is the landscape plan, because I think that's the clearest plan to show the proposed building in sight? Yes. And where, where is the outdoor play area? And what is it going to be surfaced with? Is it going to be a hard-surfaced area? Is it going to be impervious surface of some kind like wood chips or gravel? Could somebody show me? I see a word playground, but it's obviously not going to be on that slope going down. The, this fence, one thing. So where-
Could you, could you put that screen back up, please?
Mark, perhaps Mark Glusin is the person to speak to this of where the play, the outdoor playground is going to be.
Mark, do you want to speak to that or do you want me to?
Yes, I just need to get unmuted. So, you know, on a full screen, there's no mute button. You have to track it through the menus, so sorry for the delay. The play area, the fence play area is confined currently in this area. They have some additional space here that they may use for the older children. It is surfaced in grass.
Grass, I see, okay. Will there be structures in it?
At this point, no. They may possibly put some small-tented structure in this alcove in the future that might have some play equipment under it that they can use on rainy days, but that was also one of the reasons, as Pat has mentioned, for the lot, for the play space in this facility so that they would have an alternate weather place for the kids to play.
Okay, so it's clearly going to be pervious surface. We're not, we're not worried about paving, okay? Now, I note that Mr. Attorney Huber mentioned the total length of the driveway as being more than 200 feet and suggested that that would be certainly sufficient. Look at the number of cars you could accommodate in a line. But when I look at the driveway from Central Avenue to the drop-off place, it's really only about 100 feet if the total thing is 200. And so that is still an area that, you know, could only accommodate, I guess, about five cars backed up. And even with what's promised to be a very short drop-off period, I see, you know, in pickup, of course, pickup, I mean, they're dropping off in the morning, they're picking them up in the afternoon, but-
Ms. McKnight, Ms. McKnight, if I could jump in, perhaps, perhaps I wasn't being clear. When I said 200 feet or 205 feet, that's the distance from Central Avenue to that, that is not the entire paved distance that you see here. That is the distance, that is the distance from the, from the Central Avenue to this curved area where the drop-off spot is.
Oh, that helps a great deal. Okay, so I'm now, I'm glad I asked for that clarification. But then another thing is, as cars go into the turnaround area and then presumably the parent is going to want to go out to Central Ave, might there be some cars that wish to continue and drop and park in the area behind the existing building or even over in the bigger parking lot? You know, how do you handle the conflict, you know, the do-si-do between those cars?
So I'm not sure if this is what you're asking, but if the, the expectation is that the cars will come up, the majority, great majority of the cars are just there for drop-off. They're going to come up the driveway, they're going to make essentially a right turn towards the drop-off spot, near where these handicapped spaces are. They're going to continue, you know, after they've finished dropping off the child, continue around the circle and then head back out. Cars that want to, that want to go to these rear lots, you know, if a parent wants to go to one of these rear lots, if they're not, if they, if one of these spaces, you know, presumably they want to park as close as possible to the, so if these spaces are available, then they're going to park there. If those spaces are full and they still want to find a spot, what they will do is continue on and then make a right turn and go to these spaces next to the bar.
And, and you don't expect a lot of conflict between cars turning to go back to Central Ave and cars wanting to proceed straight to go park behind the existing building?
We, we, I mean, we certainly don't. That, that's, I, I understand what you're saying, that, you know, somebody doesn't want to do the loop around the, if they're heading for the back, if they, they know they're heading for the back lot and they, they're not going to, they're not going to want to go around the loop and then make a right turn and go to the back lot, they're just going to cut straight across. So somebody coming out of the loop, planning to exit, could encounter somebody heading straight across. I, I'm not sure, I, I think that's going to be a rare occurrence, but it seems to me that we can handle that with signage, you know? There could be a, there could be a stop sign there, for example, to make sure that nobody is coming across to head, heading towards the back lot.
My last, my last question has to do with picking up the children at the end of the day. I saw a one-time period where there might be 14 pickups in a half hour on Tuesday. And of course, the complications of picking up the children, that wasn't really described as far as how the children will get out of the building, know that their parent is out there and everything will be done quickly. And that's my last question and I don't know if Ms. Day would answer that.
Pat, can you speak to, can you speak to how the pickups work?
We're doing it right now. The parent, it's either the greeter knows the cars, which is true. Actually, pickup is faster than drop-off. And it, I guess you have to see it to believe it and I, you know, you're welcome to come over and take a peek if you want, but it's actually faster. This, we know the cars, the children know the cars, they know each other's cars and they're all ready to go in advance and- Oh.
All of a sudden, you got muted. You got muted.
Oh, sorry. Oh, how much did you get? Did you get any of that?
Most of it, yeah, just the last sentence we didn't get.
Yeah, so depending on the building right now, because you've got the two facilities that sometimes it's done by iPad or it's done visually. And it's kind of funny, some of the children will call out that somebody else is ready because they'll see the car and recognize it. And so it's actually faster. It's, but again, it's- and recognize it. And so it's actually faster. It's, but again, it's well honed. It's nothing we just wing. It's very well honed with the greeters.
So the children cluster outside with?
Oh, no, everybody's in the building.
All right. Well, thank you for, for your explanation.
Safety first. We're used to parking lots.
Uh, just to pick up on that point, uh, a second ago about the drop off. Um, Mark, if you're able to uh, use your mouse to this area exactly where you have it, this parking area. I don't know what the space is of that square, but I can certainly imagine a scenario where you have ten cars off Central Avenue making their way up the driveway, making the right turn, so they're getting ready to drop. Some are dropping, most will drop. Every once in a while, you have a parent that needs to make a comment or speak to one of the users or something. And so they choose to park in those spots, which I think there are five spots there. As soon, what happens to those other cars down the driveway, coming and going in both directions? As they approach and a car has to back out of one of those spots?
Yeah, I, I can, I think I can speak to that because that's what we have. The Baptist church right now, we're in a parking lot. And we have five parking spaces directly in front of the greeting door. So we have that constantly where you've got somebody backing out as somebody's coming in because somebody could park here and the next space is over here. Um, and I think the issue there is again, that we have to be extremely proactive, that people don't leave their car running, that, you know, we, that, you know, we make sure that certain scenarios happen for safety, but this is how Needham Children's Center has operated for a long time with these spy spaces. And it's similar at the Unitarian, too. Only those spaces are a little bit further away. Um, and you have to, you have to walk across the driveway. So it's a little, you know, the Baptist church is more like this. Um, picture this as a big parking lot and you see that a lot with the five spaces, they have to back out and they have to back out safely.
Is it, is it?
So they do. So I, can I, can I say it's ideal? But it is, it is definitely workable. It's anything like safety is safety first. Somebody lose their car on, we're right out there, shut it off.
So it sounds like you and, and Evan, you might concur with this, that I, we can spend a bit of time at another period of time. I, I, to just examine what's happening with that drop off, particularly when you add in the park, those five parking spaces there. And, uh, and what, and how, what the mitigation procedure would be to ensure that, to ensure that when a car backs up, it's not going to endanger a kid, a staff member, a parent, and it's also not going to slow down. The um, the car is queuing up the driveway and it's also not going to create a queue on Central Avenue.
I, I suppose there is a sidewalk here. I suppose you could.
There isn't. There is no sidewalk on central, on that section of Central.
No, she's talking about the sidewalk along the edge of the grass.
Sorry, I can't see. There's a sidewalk there. Uh, I suppose you could um, designate your short term parking over by the barn. Um, I, I hadn't thought of that because in fact, this is how we operate now is the way it is here. But that, there is a sidewalk here. We, we've designated, there is a sidewalk again for safety and so maybe that might be a good thing to think about.
Okay, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna interrupt here if I may, because it is twenty after ten.
Yeah.
And I want to have a hard stop at ten thirty-five and fifteen minutes. Um, we have not yet heard from um, Mr. Glossa. I believe that we need to get some understanding about the engineering of the location of this building and um, some talk about the possibility of moving it back farther and the um, the, the engineering that that might entail. And then, of course, we have the traffic study, which I think is going to take a long time. So Attorney Huber, I think we need to think about how we're going to um, economize for the next fifteen minutes. And um, I'm thinking perhaps we should just defer the traffic study discussion until, until the next meeting.
I, I, I agree. We're clearly not going to cover all these topics, much less get to uh, neighbor comments.
Yeah.
Um, in fifteen minutes.
So um, on the subject of neighbor comments, I have been keeping an eye on the raised hands. Um, we're up to nine attendees and I have them written down in order. So uh, when we get to the neighbors, uh, and the attendees, um, uh, I do, I do have the list of going in the order of Holly Clark, Dave Lazarus, Patricia Falco, Maggie Abruzzese, Matthew Heideman, Peter Lyons, um, Stan Keller, Eileen Sullivan, and then Joe Abruzzese. And so we only have, right now, we only have nine hands, which um, uh, if it remains those same nine people, um, I don't see needing to put a time limit on them, but we'll see what happens next time when we get to them. So um, Mr. Huber, where do you see us proceeding for the next ten to fifteen minutes?
Well, um, respectfully, what I would request then, since we're, I mean, this is later than I anticipated um, going, I, I would suggest that we stop this portion of the presentation now. Mr. Glossa, you know, I'll, I'll have Mr. Glossa and um, Mr. Gillen prepared for, you know, sort of as, as brief and precise uh, presentations on these subjects at the start of the next hearing. And uh, we continue it at that point.
I am going to suggest having a less formal proceeding than was originally planned with having an actual meeting at the PSAB um, between Mr. Gillen and Mr. Diaz. And I would like to suggest that rather than having our staff involved in this, um, have them communicate with each other over the next three weeks between now and the August meeting to hash out um, some of the issues that have been raised on the traffic study.
Mr. Chair?
Preferably, preferably actually back and forth by writing so that, so that it could be part of the record. I mean, I've seen um, this kind of communication where um, uh, one party presents the questions, the other party responds in a in a different color. And then further questions come out in a third color and the responses to that come out in a fourth color. So that we have a, a progression of uh, uh, the communication going back and forth to answer the traffic study questions um, in a way that, that will save us all, I think, a lot of time.
What I would, at the hearings. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
What I, what I would request to that end is that no later than one week prior to our next hearing in August, that's, that someone uh, so that, that both Mr. Gillen prepares a summary of changes. And uh, Mr. Diaz prepares a list of outstanding questions or unresolved issues. If there are any at that time, so that way all of us and any of the participants can simply look at the original uh, material that was provided by Mr. Gillen and also uh, the initial report provided by Mr. Diaz and quickly, you know, isolate the outstanding issues and anything that was resolved, not to the satisfaction of others.
Thank you, Mr. Block. I, I agree with you. It would be very helpful to to have this information a week ahead of time, especially since we have so much time now between now and the August meeting. The August meeting, um, I'm going to entertain a motion from one of the planning board members to continue this hearing to uh, August seventeenth at uh, what time? Lee or Alex?
Seven twenty.
So can I have a motion to that effect, please?
No moves.
I have a motion in a second. Do you have any discussion?
I would, as part of the discussion, Mr. Chair, I would request that all of the applicant consultants um, you know, continue to be present be, uh, for the duration of each of these hearings because you know, we still, maybe uh, nine thirty before we get to participants at the next hearing before we complete.
Well, hope, hopefully if um, issues can be resolved on the traffic study, it's not going to take us that long to get to the participants on August seventeenth. Um, I'm, you know, seven twenty, I would. I'm hoping that by eight thirty quarter or nine, we can get to the, to the attendees, to the, to the neighbors. But you know, we, we, I think, I think tonight has been incredibly productive and incredibly informative. Um, I, and, and, and I want to thank everybody who participated today. I want to thank, I also want to thank the um, well, we're down to thirty-five attendees now. There were more at one time. I do want to thank them all for their patience. I think they all had an, an expectation that they might be able to, to participate tonight. And I hope that they're all able to come back on August seventeenth.
Could I just ask a, a question? Um, just, um, I, I agree. I don't think the, the traffic issues uh, will take much to resolve. Um, I did have several comments regarding the site plan um, in the letter as well. So I don't know if um, if just Jack should be there, if the meeting should include the uh, site engineer as well for the questions about some of the design and circulation of, and layout of the site itself.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to ask you all to try to work out your logistics to get to get the outstanding issues resolved, but in a manner that can be presented to the board and to the, and to the, to the neighbors to, so that there's transparency as to uh, uh, what was, what, what was discussed and how the issues were resolved and perhaps, you know, setting out the give and take for us.
So to be clear, then we, it sounds like we'll need a week prior to the hearing. What's that?
That's August tenth.
A week before the hea- a week before the hearing.
Yep.
Um, uh, you know, a memo from uh, from John Diaz, a memo from uh, John Gillen um, identifying any changes to the traffic plan um, uh, and, and any outstanding issues um, you know, between those parties. Um, and that we can pick up, we can review the work that was done, ask any questions about those issues that have been resolved and um, and pick up with questions with items that have not been resolved. In other words, there may be, there may be a resolution between uh, the peer review and the initial traffic assessment. But there may be lingering questions from it that the rest of us either haven't been privy to or weren't familiar with or don't understand or challenge for any other purpose. Which is why those memos are important. Thank you.
So we have a motion on the floor. Are we ready for the roll call? Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Ms. McKnight?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. This hearing is being continued to August seventeenth at seven twenty.
Thank you. Thank you, members of the board.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Okay. Now I have to find my agenda. Do we, do we have any correspondence?
Well, we had a correspondence we distributed later, so maybe we'll, we'll roll that into the, in which you didn't have a chance to review. So let's just roll that into the next meeting.
So we have a report from the planning director.
I just wanted to tell the board that um, the chair and vice chair, um, and myself are going to meet with the select board chair and vice chair.
We, can we hold off for just a minute? Natasha, are you coming back?
We may need to give her a minute to switch over.
Yeah. Perhaps Alex can help her switch over. Is she there?
I can shoot her a text.
I don't see her listed.
I'm having, I'm just texting her.
Okay. She may have gone home.
While we're, while we're waiting, um, I just want to mention that we did get a communication yesterday regarding light pollution. Um, and I wanted to just make a suggestion.
Yes, that was, hi Natasha, welcome back.
Yes.
Hi.
Hi. Uh, yes, there, there was a piece of correspondence um, from someone who uh, was complaining about light pollution at the seven eleven.
Right.
Location.
Anne Hyatt, what's her name?
Thank you, Jean.
The planning board doesn't hold, we don't hold any permits on that property. So when that conversion was made, it was just a, when, I think Friendly's was there before and then the seven eleven went in. It was just done slowly through um, a building permit to the building department. So Alex sent that on to um, Dave Roach um, for resolution.
Yeah. I'm sure, I, I'm sure they're building um, building code regulations, or I would hope that there are building code regulations that Dave Roach can can uh, refer to, to uh.
Well, there are regulations that we have in the zoning book on, on parking lots and the illumination within parking lots. And there are certain standards that are embedded in there. And so when he's doing an as of right uh, conversion of use, he, those, those requirements are, are to be enforced through him.
Yep. So I remember who owns, who owns that lot. It's last, last I knew it, it's um, one, one of the real estate brokers in town.
Is it Gaz? Um, not, uh, Gatto?
No, 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 last name begins with F. Um, he, he used to be in Cliff London's uh, group. What's that, Marty?
Dave Roach will know.
Yeah.
Um, I, I, as we have often been asked to waive lighting standards for parking lots um, in our special permit process. Um, as we uh, engage in long-term planning, I'd like just to have a better understanding of the subject of, of what, what rules we have, um, how they're applied, why are waivers constantly being sought? Um, are, should, should we be considering any amendments to our zoning in that regard? And perhaps our town engineer is the person, I'll look at a peer and discuss that issue with us if there is time in the year to come.
Okay.
Let's see if this issue was resolved about the seven eleven. Okay, uh, Lee, um, sorry to interrupt you, but um, I thought it was important that Natasha be here.
Of course. I, I was just um, indicating that um, on July twenty ninth, Adam and I have a meeting, or the chair and the vice chair of this board are meeting with the chair and the vice chair of the select board. Um, I think the primary issue on the agenda is going to be moving forward on housing issues. Um, and so to that end, I've been working with Karen Sennaborg to get, to put together the framework for the framework for the development of, of the housing plan and the components of that, of that plan and a timeline to accomplish it and what the steering committee group would look like that would oversee that, oversee that work. So that's going to be discussed on the 29th. I also wanted to tell you that before we did the downtown study almost 15 years ago, I partnered with MIT, a practicum course that was taught. And there was a course that was dedicated solely to looking at redevelopment options in Needham Center. And I worked with three teams in their graduate school. And there's interest, I guess, now for the professor that's now teaching that practicum course to do another project perhaps in Needham, looking at the Highland Avenue corridor and how that itself might be reutilized to promote mixed use development of a higher density. So I'm going to be having some preliminary conversations with the professor at MIT to see if there might be some synergy there to look at an update of a planning study along the Highland Avenue corridor focused around opening up housing opportunities and around mixed use development.
Lee, who is the professor at MIT?
Levine. It's, he's, it's a practicum course, so he's like, he's a lecturer there. The person I did the course with years ago was a woman by the name of Terri Zoll. The course was originally taught by Phil Hare and then Terri Zoll took it over. And so I think his, I think his last name is Levine, Levine, Levine. I haven't spoken with him yet. I was just given his contact information and I understand he's interested in doing something in Needham around those kinds of issues. So if you're interested in Natasha and in participating in that and even looking at the work program, I, I welcome your participation. But it was a very successful effort. We used it almost as a framework to kind of look at the center and Chestnut Street, its mixed use development opportunities. And the quality of work that we got out of those graduate students was at a professional level. And that then became the foundation for the work that was done by Dinesco when they actually did the downtown plan. So we'd never really looked, the Highland Avenue corridors was last done or studied, I think in 1989. So the business district where Virtutis is, is currently was never rezoned out of that effort. And Avery Square was just kind of created, but it was only done at a density of two and a half stories. And so I think it probably does make sense with the, with the business district there. And we talked about looking at that business district at one point and, and Avery Square. I'm just basically the whole corridor running from May all the way up to Gold Street. It might, it might make sense to kind of look at that. I'm not quite sure what the framework for that work would be yet. I need to think about that and certainly get some of the board's input. But it's kind of interesting that we might be able to partner with MIT again. And we could create really the questions we want to see answered and get, I think, probably a pretty professional product that could be used as an educational tool.
So one of the, one of the things on that similar point that the CEA is working on through one of its subcommittees is a comparison of the center business district and Chestnut and a review of the, the uses and the dimensional requirements for those and to, and to consider updating and making some suggestions for improvements. Lee, is that section what you're thinking about?
I was thinking of more the Highland, I was thinking more the Highland Avenue corridor, starting from May Street, running toward Newton up toward Gold. So I was thinking about running it actually in the other direction.
Okay, okay.
Was done and, and we've talked about the business district where Virtutis is, which really doesn't reflect the town's goals and, but certainly we can talk about that, you know, what the, what the goal is. I thought the corridor itself, the spine made a lot of sense to look at.
Lee, I'm interested in participating, so let me know.
Okay, that, I would welcome your, your involvement.
Lee, for this chair, vice chair meeting, are you getting the the zoning request about gun shops onto the agenda?
I haven't, I haven't confirmed that yet, Paul. I'll, I'll take care of that.
Please. Yes, Jean.
I just want to let you know that I participated in a video a week ago, which is now being distributed and I'll send you a copy. And it's, it's something called, a program called Moving Forward Together and by Equal Justice Needham, and this was the housing group. And inspired very much by Richard Rothstein's book, The Color of Law, which has a thesis of de jure segregation as being the factor that has led to the segregation of a metropolitan areas today. A young woman, Rachel Green, and I, using Gloria Greis, our historians, information from a couple of her articles, we did research in the Norfolk Registry of the Deeds and, and found restrictions in Needham, pre-zoning type restrictions that were very interesting. We didn't, we only found one actual racial restriction, express racial restriction. But my role in the video was to go from the private restrictions that existed in the first part of the 19th century in the, in the early years to the establishment of municipal zoning. And our first zoning bylaw was in 1925. I found the bylaw, I found the map. And it's very, it's, it really had a couple of interesting points. Our business districts are not, were not as large as they are today, but all of the business districts allowed apartment buildings. Also, the select board had the authority in single-family homes to allow an additional unit to be built in the home if the home was in existence in 1925, similar to an accessory dwelling unit, it seemed to me. So there were just some interesting things. And I'll forward the, you'll find that the emphasis is very much on racial justice and not so much in our local zoning, but that was my part in it.
Jean, I also read that book and it's very interesting, The Color of Law.
Yes.
Very eye-opening, so thank you for bringing it up.
Natasha, I remembered, the professor's first name is Jeff.
Yeah, I, I did a lecture at MIT in the fall, I think. But I, I'm not familiar with him, but I think I would really be interested in that. And also connect other departments as well.
Okay, good.
Regarding equity and other things, so.
Can I move to adjourn or are we not quite there yet?
Lee, anything else?
I have nothing else to add.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? Hi, Alex. Okay, I'll call the roll, Mr. Block.
Aye.
Mrs. Spata?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Ms. McKnight?
Aye.
And the chair, whose name begins with A, is last and votes aye. Thank you all and good night.
Good night. Good night, Paul. Good night, everybody.
Good night.